Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Please stand for the pledge by Councilmember Rowe.
............................................. You may be seated.
One of the most important rights of American citizens is the right to vote. It wasn't that long ago that only white males over the age of 21 were eligible to vote. That was shameful. Thankfully, voting rights have been extended several times. The 15th Amendment eliminated the condition of race and color. The 19th Amendment eliminated denial on account of sex. 24th Amendment eliminated required poll taxes. And the 26th Amendment lowered the eligible voting age to 18 and over. Our next election is only one week from today. My encouragement is that everyone who has registered to vote, engage in the process. Know the candidates before you enter the polling booth. Know the issues before you enter the polling booth. Do your civic duty. Do the research. Congressman John Lewis said, "The right to vote is precious, almost sacred. It is the most powerful nonviolent tool or instrument in a democratic society. We must use it." Vote on November 8th.
Thank you. Well said.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here and hearing from you on our many items today. I would encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least turn them to vibrate.
Item 6, resolution to approve the preliminary plat for MH Landing Replat 2 located northeast of 70th and Grover Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote on number 6 is today. Proponents, please.
Reagan Pence with Lamprey Nielsen, 17310 West Dodge Road, Suite 1068154, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 6 is approved, 7 to 0. Item 7, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Bartlett's addition to Omaha, Replat 7, located southwest of 30th and Leavenworth Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote on number 7 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Senate Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This plat is part of a redevelopment plan that was at the planning board last month and will be coming to you in the near future here. So with that, it's just a lot combination of like six lots into one. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Larry, can you come back, please? Thanks.
Yes.
So that area there from 30th to 31st Street, that's, there's an old post office there, which is a tattoo parlor and all the development that's gone on in the past across the street recently, maybe a couple of years ago, the triangle. Just kind of talk about that area in general if you could.
Well, I have not spent a lot of time in that area, but we did have a neighborhood meeting across the street, and I can't remember the dessert place that we had the neighborhood meeting at. But it's dramatically changing with redevelopment all up and down that corridor. So this is another positive redevelopment project for this particular area. And this is going to be a multifamily project. There'll be 73 units, meets all the urban design code requirements. So again, it'll be an attractive building at this location, and it will be getting rid of, you know, the blight that currently exists there because it's partially undeveloped. And then there's one building on the, currently on the west side of the proposed development or redevelopment that doesn't look very well. I think it's a tattoo parlor.
Yeah.
So all that will be raised, so it'll be, I think, a dramatic improvement to this particular area on the south side of Leavenworth.
Thanks. And I know there's a coffee shop on 31st we approved a few months ago that's going to be going in. So to your point on the Park Avenue area, the redevelopment that's happened several years in the past on that, and across the street at the triangle, so this is a good area to build this on. I know the old Leavenworth, they had a, like a reception hall there years ago, so that area's been kind of dormant for a while, so.
Right.
Just be a good addition.
For the council members that are not familiar with this particular area, oops, wrong way. This is the current state of affairs in this particular location. Here's the tattoo parlor that I was talking about that will be raised. And this is just the general area. The redevelopment project here, with 30th Street on the east, Leavenworth on the north, and so it's this entire project right here. Which ultimately, when we talk about the redevelopment plan, which will be before you, this is what's being proposed.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 7 is approved, 7 to 0. Item 8, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Briggs Place, Replat 9, located southeast of 48th and Dodge Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 8 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Jeff Stoll with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mova Road, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 8 is approved, 7 to 0. Item 9, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1714 Sailor Street, from GI District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 9 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 9 is approved, 7 to 0. Item 10, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 4150 North 132nd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Rob Woodling, Foundation's Development, 1886 South 126th Street. I'll be the developer of this mixed-income senior affordable housing project. Be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, 7 to 0. Item 11, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 8200 North 30th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be as communication and support.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Joe Proctor, 8446 Madison Street, Omaha. Just, I wrote the application, so I'm here to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Please come down.
My name is Linda Meggs, and I'm the director of, own the Florence Mill at 9102 North 30th Street, Omaha 68112. And I am an opponent of this project because it does not go along with our master plan for the development of heritage tourism and heritage neighborhood that the Florens has sought. And about 10 years ago, we did a master plan for historic Florence, and it was accepted by the city council. And a few years before that, I designed us an antique historic sign at the entrance, at two entrances of the Florence neighborhood that was declined to be discussed because it was Highway 75. And this was a historic-looking sign that was designed to enhance the neighborhood and the historic feel, heritage tourism feel that we're trying to encourage. And the sign that's being discussed is a digital sort of blinking sign that's way more distracting than the historic Florence sign that we intended to put up. I don't believe it fits in with our heritage tourism master plan and what we're trying to do to bring economic development to Omaha with encouraging heritage tourism in the Florence neighborhood.
Thank you. Other opponents?
I'm Mailey Mason, 9632 North 34th Street. I have been an advocate for the Florence community for over 30 years. We have been actively promoting Florence as the historic entrance to Omaha. We raised over $200,000 to prepare and present a Florence master plan to the city, which was approved. The only thing so far, thanks much to Pete Festerston, is improvements we've had to our streetscape were some very nice historical-looking street lamps along 30th Street, a couple of blocks. We've had some improvement to the sidewalks, although they are starting to crumble right now. The Florence community raised the money for wrought iron benches and trash receptacles along 30th Street to keep with our master plan. Again, when Linda Meggs submitted this beautiful wrought iron historic, welcome to historic Florence signage, it was not approved. There's also several businesses within the Florence community that proposed some tasteful antique and bookstore signs that were not approved. St. Philip Neri Church was only required to inform neighboring properties within 300 feet of their plans for a large, bright, digital sign that does not conform to the historic Florence master plan. The only properties within 300 feet are One Residence, the Florence Park, and St. Philip Neri School behind them. The businesses along 30th Street were not informed. We were not informed about this sign, so we were not able to talk to the planning commission about this. So I'm here to question how the city planning board makes their decisions about signage. Do they give preferential treatment to religious establishment? Now, this is not against the church. This is about the planning commission. Because why were these businesses and other signs not approved, but this one that does not comply to our master plan that we raised the money for, approved? So I just ask that you consider that, and, you know, this is, it's just so frustrating to put our time and our money in trying to improve our community and then just get bashed by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. This being in the Florence area, I might ask a few questions of you, Mr. Fansler, and maybe a couple of the testifiers. So having been involved in the historic efforts to preserve the Florence Business District over time, I did help with that master plan that was just referenced, and it has been adopted by the planning board and city council into our city's master plan. And that was the basis by which we also proceeded to do about a million dollars' worth of public infrastructure improvements to be consistent with that historic nature and that historic character of the business district. And that was important, and that was a significant effort led by the neighborhood and the North Omaha Commercial Club. Having said that, St. Philip Neri has always been a great partner in those efforts too, and has been a long-term anchor right there in the neighborhood also. So when I first saw this case, I was like, oh, great, the church is going to upgrade its monument sign and have it look nice and be a new thing. But then I saw it's a digital sign, and I had a bit the same reaction as the opponents did just now, that to me, that is a little bit concerning as it applies to the historic nature of the business district, which is literally a block away and is right across the street from a city park. So I began looking at this case a little bit, and we talked about it a little bit this morning. Mr. Fansler, I might engage you a little bit on it. The item actually before us today is what's called a major commercial corridor overlay district. So it's a zoning overlay that either gets approved today or not approved today, right?
Dave Fansler, City Planning. That is correct.
And the sign portion of this, which is included in the paperwork, is not what's being decided today. In fact, that's already been decided by the zoning board of appeals. Is that right?
That's correct. It was the church approached the department about the sign change. The setback for their old sign did not meet setbacks, so they were required to do a major amendment to their presumed conditional use permit, which is a planning board approval process. As part of that approval process, staff can't waive the code, so St. Philip Neri had to go to the zoning board of appeals for that setback waiver. It's typical, though, for when use permits come back in for reapplying or re-upping their permits, or if they seek a waiver, that staff requires certain properties that are along those major commercial corridors to apply for that overlay zoning, which ensures future improvements to the site would meet our urban design code.
And do you feel that the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, considered or was aware of the master plan amendment of the historic neighborhood, historic Florence district in their decision-making?
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak if they knew about that or not.
That would normally be a thing brought to their attention, though. Wouldn't it be like an analysis and paperwork?
It would.
Okay. Well, I would share the concern from opponents today if it wasn't, because it should be, as a portion of our master plan that was very conscientiously adopted in that respect. I don't know if that would have influenced the ZBA's decision or not. I know sometimes it doesn't in situations like this.
Like I said, I can't speak for what they would have done.
It does say, you know, in our paperwork about it, that it describes their approval for it and the variance in the setbacks you just described, I guess correcting the fact that it was not in the proper setback. But it also does note that this otherwise would not be permitted in the R3 district to install an electronic signage but for their action, right?
Correct.
So that's not, as I said, what we can decide today. I don't agree with that decision, and I think it should have been more conscientious of the neighborhood historic, historic nature of the neighborhood. Mr. Proctor, if you might, just for a minute?
Once again, Joe Proctor, 8446 Madison Street.
Thank you. And you're here, are you with the church? Do you represent the?
I'm on behalf of the church, but I'm also on behalf of the sign company putting the sign up. However, I have family members that are members of the church. That's how I got elected to help the church.
Okay. So I don't know if you can answer this question or not, and it's nothing I can ask you to do or not do, because you, the church does have the approval to take that sign action. But as you can tell, there is some consternation in the neighborhood. Many felt they weren't aware of it and might have liked to have had a conversation about it. I don't know if that would have led to a different outcome, but I guess I would suggest before, regardless of what happens here today, before, you know, construction just starts or it goes in, maybe that dialogue occur, I don't know if that'll change your plan or not, or it could produce a different outcome on the sign, but I would definitely encourage that to happen with North Omaha Commercial Club or those representatives, since there's always been a great partnership in this particular area, and it's important that everybody's kind of on the same page.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll put a little context. The, as far as the setback, it's because the North 30th Street is a state highway. Must be a 30-foot setback from the backside of the curb. The sign originally, back before that setback, was changed by the right-of-way rules, laws for state of Nebraska. The sign was well within setback years and years ago when it was originally installed. Now, since the setback has been moved 30 feet back, the sign literally, quite literally straddles the property line. Four foot onto the right-of-way, four foot onto church property. We approached Nebraska DOT, received an encroachment permit, so they were okay with the fact that the sign would go out there. We also approached Planning Commission for Planning Board for the major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit. That was approved. Then we were told to approach the zoning board of appeals to receive the proper waivers, which required maximum allowed sign budget, maximum allowed detached signage, square footage, and the setback from what was supposed to be 12 foot to zero foot. Those were all granted. At no time did Mike Carter, current planning director, mention anything about there being a master plan. So we, I hate to say that, but we didn't know about it, quote unquote. So as far as the sign itself, doesn't blink. We made concessions with the planning department that since there is no actual ordinances for a sign of this type, a monument sign, however, there are ordinances, of course, for the large billboards on the interstate, we chose to follow those ordinance, you know, those types of ordinances as a guideline. So the sign will not have animation. The sign will not fade in, fade out. There'll be a maximum of 10 seconds per image. So the sign will have an image for 10 seconds, change, change, so on and so forth. Doesn't blink, no animation, no, nothing, you know, that would distract the road. And the sign sits back 30 feet from the road, so it's fairly off the right-of-way. Also, at nighttime, the sign will be dimmed so that it doesn't become this gigantic spotlight, basically. It's, it's an automatic sign where, the type of sign that it is, electronically, we can tell it what time of day to automatically dim. So it'll be to the point where at night, it will be much like you're driving during the day. And I know that's hard to explain, but during the day, it's visible, but because of ambient light, it's not bright and overpowering. At night, it will dim and not be bright and overpowering. We made those concessions because we knew that there was no actual ordinances, and the neighborhood's not going to like all the blinking animation anyway, which we had no intention of doing anyway. Just wanted to make a real, I guess, modern version of what was there. The old sign, we're building the new sign on the old sign location. The old sign had a manual reader board where we changed the letters by hand. So we're just taking the old sign off, putting a new sign on, and it's not going to change as far as that goes, or size, still 32 square feet.
Okay. I think those things are positive, but I would still encourage you to engage them.
Yes, definitely.
And see what else we can do, maybe have some compromise on, on the situation.
Okay, yeah. Our business director at the church, he's already been in contact with Ms. Mason, so there can be definitely some more dialogue going on.
Okay. And other than that, I don't see any reason, you know, not to approve what is the major commercial corridor overlay today. In fact, in most cases, that'll be complimentary and helpful to what we're trying to get out here in terms of achieving our historic character and having some more supervision about what can happen and what cannot happen on certain properties. One last question for you, Mr. Fansler. So I just want to do ensure that when we have anything coming in these districts, and particularly in a district that's adopted its own historic master plan, that that is referenced in planning documents going forward. I'm sure that, that's a takeaway from you for this meeting, for sure.
Sure, yeah. We look at everything that's available to us as far as our records go. I believe the only thing we found, and just we'll have to go back and check, is the recon survey that happened back in the late 2000s, so 2007, 2008. Be able, sure, we always take a look at that stuff.
Yeah, I think that was about the date, 2007, when we adopted that document into the master plan. And then, I'm not sure if you can address the other signs that were brought up, they might all be different situations, but any comment on?
You know, if I can provide my contact information, I'm not familiar with those sites, but if we can make contact, yeah, we'll, we'll see why, but I, they weren't familiar to me.
Okay.
I don't remember, I don't remember any case history for those sites.
Okay. I'd be happy to facilitate that afterwards, too.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I was going to bring that up. I was hoping that maybe the signs that got denied, which sounded like good signs and perfect for the area, if somebody could, if maybe somebody could relook at those to see if maybe there was something they could do to get waivers like St. Philip Neri did. Maybe they weren't aware of anything they could do, so I would appreciate that, Mr. Fansler, if you could take a second look at those signs. And then I just wanted to clarify, because how I read it, the sign has already been approved. We're not voting on the sign today. Is that correct, Mr. Fansler?
That is correct, yeah. What you're voting on today is the MCC overlay.
Just the overlay. So whether we vote on this or not, the sign, basically, the sign's already been approved, or they've received waivers for the sign, so there's really nothing that the council can do.
They are to, they are free to install the sign at their convenience, yes.
So, and I, so I just wanted to clarify, for the opponents today, we could vote no on this, the sign still comes, it just comes without the MCC overlay, so we're not voting on the sign today. I do have to say, though, with something where the neighborhood is this, you know, upset, and there's a number of different objections, I guess I'm very disappointed that nobody from St. Philip Neri was here, nobody from the parish board or the parish was here to kind of discuss this, because then maybe they could meet with the neighbors who are opponents. Is there somebody from St. Philip Neri?
Yes.
Do you want to come down, sir? If you could, just state your name and address.
Fred Doran, 8733 North 52nd Avenue.
And thank you for coming down. And what is your, are you on the parish board?
Business manager.
Okay. And, I mean, have you had discussions with the neighbors in the neighborhood about the sign?
Recently, we had discussion with Ms. Mason.
Okay.
Just last week.
Well, no, okay. Well, we can't have back and forth, unfortunately, but between people here. But I just wanted to know what kind of outreach maybe the parish had had, because it could be that some of your parishioners don't know that this is going on, maybe they're going to be upset when they get the sign put in. Is the parish sure they want to move forward with this sign?
Parish, parishioners are well aware.
They are.
We had a fundraiser for a three-year period.
Okay.
Many businesses on 30th Street are parishioners.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure there was.
It was part of a big renovation we did to the church, and this was one of the pieces of that project that was a three-year pledge deal.
Okay.
Where we raised money to do the project.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure there was that outreach, so I appreciate you coming down, because I did want to hear from somebody from, from the parish to hear about what had been going on.
Yeah, I apologize. Earlier, I didn't understand the proceedings. That's my ignorance, but.
No, that's okay. Thank you for taking the time for coming down here, and I'm glad I, I'm glad I asked if there was somebody here from the parish, because I did, I mean, most of the parishioners are also neighbors. I mean, that's kind of how it works with the, with the parish. And so if your parishioners, who are also your neighbors, did this amount of work and spent this amount of time, that's good, that's good to hear. And also today, again, we're just voting on the MCC overlay, so hopefully, hopefully you can work with the neighbors in the future, making sure it doesn't flash or isn't disturbing.
Sure.
All right. Thank you so, thank you for coming down.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.[1768.83]
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 6625 and 6603 L Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today, proponents please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Item 13, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 7630 and 7660 L Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today, proponents please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Items 14 and 15 can be considered together for a property located at 3819 North 24th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone this property from GI District to MBD District. Item 15, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on items 14 and 15 are today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, President, members of the board. My name is Kyle Keith, I'm the partner for NOC redevelopment, development, developer for this property, 3819 North 24th Street, the old Native Omaha building. Have any questions, if you guys have any?
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Keith, if you could come up to the mic, please. Hey, how are you today?
I'm good, how you doing, Councilman?
Just for our viewers, and just for, just an opportunity for you to market what's going to be happening at that location, which I find to be very exciting and refreshing for the area, but I just wanted to be on record so that everyone is aware of what we're planning to do there.
Yeah, no problem. So, back at the end of 2020, there's RFP for the Native Omaha building on 24th and Layer Street. Me and my partner Katrina Adams, we put in a RFP for it, thankfully, we won. Our plan for the building is a mixed-use building. First floor is going to be commercial, second floor is obviously going to be residential. Two of the residential units are going to be affordable housing through vouchers. On the first floor, we're going to have office space, general office space, flex space in the middle for community events and things like that, and a sliding scale for community partners that are in proximity of the building and sliding up for as needed. And then in the third bay, we're going to have a breakfast restaurant and cafe-style situation there with a built-out patio for outdoor eating and enjoyment. So we're very excited about this building, this is a building that has a lot of significance for the community. It's the former Omaha, Native Omaha building. It's the birthplace of Native Omaha Days, the biannual event that happens in North Omaha every, every other year, it's coming up next year. We're really excited about it to bring some revitalization to the area along with some other developments that's happened down the street. I think it's going to be a, a very positive mark in development of 24th Corridor, and can't wait to see it happen.
Thank you, and can you expand on that and give us a date that we're going to start movement and then?
Sure, so, right now, we are in the process of going through TIF. I believe that's going to be presented to the city council next week. Obviously, after that process, we won't be able to start construction. Everything that our contract is a total is going to be 18-month process, so we're shooting for spring '24.
Thank you, and we, you do have a partner, significant partner, Katrina Adams?
Yes, Katrina Adams, yes, ma'am.
To be, to talk a little bit about how she's going to play her role in, in this project and all of that?
Well, she's, she's my, you know, equal partner in this project. Along the way, like I said at the beginning, we went to Spark Developer Academy together, we saw this RFP together, we applied for it together, and we've been hand-in-hand the whole entire time.
All right, looking forward to this, and I'm going to go ahead and move that we accept this.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Second. So motion in a second, no further lights. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 16 and 17 can be considered together for property located at 13125 Q Street and 5616 Harry Anderson Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone this property from CC District and GI District to GI District. Item 17, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on items 16 and 17 are today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, my name is Ben Meyer, I work for Tyson Foods, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? I'm sorry, sir, I forgot to get your address there, if you could.
I'm sorry, 13076 Renfro Circle.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 16 and 17? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second, roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow small group living within 600 feet of another group living facility located at 3013 and 3015 North 95th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today, proponents please.
Justice Breimer, 4932 Evans Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104, founder and owner of Nebraska Neuro-Behavioral Services. We had to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Are you, are you a proponent, sir?
Pro.
Okay, yeah, please, please come down and be ready, go ahead.
Pro or O?
These are opponents, yes.
Okay. Hi, good afternoon, my name is Jerry Lynn Murphy, I live at 9489 Worth Street. I have lived there since February of 2020. My property directly is east of the property in question. I am an employee of the University of Nebraska at Omaha in the College of Public Affairs and Community Service for the last 24 years. While I've resided in my home on Worth Street, I've had my fair share of encounters with the current residents under the supervision of the Nebraska Neuro-Behavioral Services located at 3013 and 3015. One resident cut off his ankle monitor, where it was eventually located in my backyard. The southwest corner of the property is not fenced off from my backyard. Many residents freely move from the facility to my backyard without question. Most recently, on September 29th, at approximately 7:30 a.m., one of the residents was caught on camera peeking into the windows on my back deck. I was home at the time of his trespassing. After peering into my home, he attempted to open my patio door. At various times, I've made attempts to reach out to the supervisor or landlord, but no one has ever been available. My concern with moving from the current use of an adult developmentally disabled unsupervised facility to a youth non-disabled facility is the supervision of the temporary residents. According to the proposal, there will be three shifts per day. Question, will there be a staff member for each side of the facility? The current layout of the facility does not allow for direct supervision by one staff member over potentially 12 residents. Another question, when a resident needs transportation, who will provide such transportation? The staff member currently on duty at the residence, another staff member from the Nebraska Neuro-Behavioral Services, or will it be contracted out? My concern is that if the transportation needs to be provided by a staff member at the residence, who will supervise the youth remaining at the property? I would like to call into question the current condition of the facility. According to the proposal, a minimum of six off-street parking spaces are required. At the present time, the garages for 3013 are continuously open 24 hours, 7 days a week, which allows for feral cats, raccoons, and other animals to claim as their home. Question, when was the facility inspected to see if it meets the needs of the proposed facility? Another concern is the garages for 3015 are used for storage, which need to be cleared out and available for parking according to the requirements. The facility has deteriorated since February of 2020, and in its current condition, I do not feel it is appropriate living facility for youth, nor the current residents. As a taxpayer, the current building needs attention and possible repairs, windows and exterior doors are broken. Temporarily housing youth in a facility as it is now does not seem in the best interest of our youth. I tell you this to let you know how I feel, that the current use of the facility is not acceptable, nor is the proposed use of the facility. Youth lacking a permanent home or seeking foster care need to know that we, as taxpayers and the City of Omaha, care about them and their welfare. They don't feel like they, we don't want them to feel like we've placed them in a facility that's rundown or damaged. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Hi there, my name is Mike O'Brien, my address is 9485 Worth Street, and I'll just expound a little bit on what Jerry said, pretty much agree with everything she said. I've lived in the neighborhood since 1977. This building has been a group home of one sort or another for nearly 20 years. For that whole time, they have not been good neighbors. The property is always in disrepair. It's virtually impossible to get in touch with anybody that is in supervisory capacity when things happen. I would like to see it go back to residential housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
I have, I have a handout that I could supply, I've got enough copies for at least the council members. I hadn't quite anticipated the, the others seated behind, is that all right?
Yeah, you can just hand them right here to the clerk, and she'll get the council members.
I've been.
Just your name and address for the.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Michael Brandon, 3114 North 95th Street. I'm about a block down from the facility there, and I don't know how that works, maybe it doesn't need to be used. I discovered recently that, I mean, very recently, that we're looking at, or the request was made for a, a small group living facility, but the definitions on residential uses hold for, and that's 55-763, holds for a large group living facility, that the, for an R5 zoning, with the owner not living in the resident, that that allows no more than 12 residents. The, the permit requested is for 12 residents, so rather than a small group living facility, which for some reason doesn't have that ceiling defined, but why would there be a, a difference if there isn't some lower ceiling below the 12? But there are some important differences in the, the regulations that must be followed between large group living and small group living that affect my neighborhood, very much so, as well as the occupants who are slated to be there, sorry, my mouth is drying up and things are sticking together. One thing is that a lot of the people who live really close to that facility are actually outside of the 600 feet. As I walked around the neighborhood and talked to people, I found that there are a lot of people who would be most affected by the facility who didn't get notification. That would change if we looked at the 1,200 feet that we have to look at for people who would be notified for a large group facility. Again, the maximum number of residents allowed would be 12, the same as for 55-763 Part C. One of the other things that is of interest, though, is that 55-763 Part C dot two C is that for all districts, all zonings, a minimum of 200 square feet must be provided in the dwelling for each resident, rather than the somewhat hellish accommodations that I was able to figure out with a digital caliper and some basic techniques. I cross-checked this by simple visual bissection of spaces on the scaled plan, but if, if you're going to have six youth per side, you have three bedrooms, one of those bedrooms would offer 45 square feet to each of the two occupants of the bedroom, in, in the way that it must be divided, that would be 8.85 by 5 for that bedroom that is 8.85 by 10.1. The best that it gets is 61 square feet for a resident. That's all the space in that resident that they would be able to call their own. Also, there's a lot of other, there's, there's a lot of problems with the public record on, on this. Reading through things, there's some things I think that have been kind of modified or updated. The applicant's answer to the number of square feet that will be provided is 75. That is not possible by a simple inspection of the plan, that is not possible for them. But you have an age difference of 13 years to 18 years. How much would any of us like to be the 13-year-old in that facility that, as I understand things, and I, I hope that maybe the council will ask Mr. Breimer, where are these youth being held temporarily on their way to? Because, as I understand, at the planning board meeting, Veronica Bush stated that some of the referrals will be from the youth detention center. The application materials say that some of the referrals will be from the state, some of the referrals will be from probation, some of the referrals will be from, I don't remember, but it, it sounds to me like the youth who will be housed at this facility will have somewhat earned the status of not having a place to stay by virtue of some of their own actions. And so we're talking about putting a dozen youth who have acted out, possibly committed some criminal offense, concentrated in that one facility in our neighborhood. Will there be both males and females? How will the sex of the residents and the privacy be respected between male and female residents? What are the rules of the household? Will they be allowed to wander around the streets of the neighborhood at night? Any kind of curfew required? One of my neighbors asked how many staff will actually be on either side, because some of the application materials stated that, yes, there will be a staff member. That's not sufficient. You have two sides, you have two floors, so you have four spaces that need to be monitored. That's, and if there was an incident, some kind of an accident, and you only had one staff, how could they respond? You would, you would, if someone needed to be taken somewhere or something like that, you would basically be occupying that one staff on that one incident, then what if something else happened? So one staff is clearly insufficient for any period of time at the resident, residents. And then, stated clearly, where do the referrals and compensation come from specifically? Where are these youth headed to that they're being held in this facility? All these cases, where will they be destined to go when a space opens up? And then, and certainly not all-inclusive, but what is the procedure for revocation and restriction of permits here? Because of things like the woman, my neighbor, talked to. Because of things like the woman my neighbor talked about with, uh, the number of police and fire calls to that address? I mean, I would think that after a certain, uh, track record, it would be reviewed and may be revoked. Now, I, I have three requests here that if a permit must be issued, and I think that, I think the process actually needs to start over, looking at that twelve hundred-foot radius or circle, uh, because it is a large facility, unless Mr. Braima wants to scale down his, uh, plans. I think we need to start over. We need to inform more of my neighbors. I think it would be wise since, well, as I said, that neighbors who are just a block, block and a half away from it, we're not informed because they're outside of that six hundred-foot radius. It's a twelve hundred-foot radius. It's a large group living facility. If it's going to have a dozen people, we can't play shell games with addresses and indeed, if I look at the treasurer's website, the only address that comes up that belongs to Braima Family Trust is thirty thirteen. So the treasurer is not making any distinction between the two sides of a duplex. It's one structure. They're going to try to have a dozen kids there, plus staff, which I hope will bump that number up to at least fourteen at all times. But that's a large group living facility. So anyway, uh, number one, if a permit must be issued, I request limiting the occupation to no more than four youths per side. I believe, there is only one shower on either side of it, by the way. More than that will strain the actual capacity, make for cramped quarters. I'm concerned staff may also have difficulty with more. Two, I request that any permit run with the owner rather than the land. Because I'm not sure of what use a subsequent owner might make for that property if the permit, just anyone who makes the purchase of it gets to have the right of a group facility. That isn't the way it should be. It should be based on the person, the person's plan, credentials, so on. So it should not run with the land. And three, uh, back to the staffing, there should be one staff member per side at all times, rather than one staff member. And I don't know, um, what power the city council has to, uh, make any kind of a permit conditional upon those things. And that's what I'm really concerned about is that, uh, providing a permit, um, to me, it's, it's not what Mr. Braima says that he's going to do, it's what the law would allow him to do. Because I believe that it's entirely possible that if a permit allows, uh, for a certain, um, operation of the facility there, whatever the extent of that is, will actually be what we could get. Even if we trust Mr. Braima to tell us that everything's fine, uh, I'd really like to see it chiseled into stone so that that's the way the operational characteristics there would have to be before, or, I mean, w- well, before, uh, i- if those characteristics are not adhered to, that any permit granted would be revoked. Because of the, uh, the distinction, though, between large group living facility and small group living facility, which is, again, as I said, that's what we've been processing so far, but I don't think it really pertains here. I think we need to hold this over and start over with the process. More neighbors need to be allowed to have their input, and the, the, uh, requirements of the large group living facility need to be followed, which are clearly not with this application.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Several good questions that we'll delve into here in a minute. Any other opponents today?
My name's Marisa LaBruno, and I live at ninety-five oh-three Worth Street. I am right across the street. I've been at this property for two and a half years, and I'm not as prepared as they are, but I can tell you that I've had several of the same problems with this property, had to call the police. I work from home, so I get to see the police there all the time, them at my property, and, um, I have an eleven-year-old daughter. So to me, having this kind of property is unacceptable. But, um, so I'm here to support my neighbors, especially, like I said, because I have a child and I think twelve kids across the street. They already scare her as it is, the current tenants, so I can only imagine how things are going to change. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak?
Larry Store, five oh-one-five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I don't live in that neighborhood, but I do have quite a bit of experience in these topics. And I've noticed there's been a lot of small group and large group living resolutions, whatever you want to call them, passed through this council lately. But when it comes to children, juveniles, there has to be some kind of state control over this. They're either juveniles being sent there temporarily, so the numbers are down at the Douglas County Juvenile Center, or the city jail, or it's part of one of these programs to keep them from being embarrassed, being seen in handcuffs or whatever at the, they won't, at the new ju- juvenile, I guess. But I have a grandson that's been in homes all of his life practically, and I've seen a lot of homes. They move from home to home to home because staff, citizens, sometimes things don't work out. Not enough staff, not enough supervision. Neighbors aren't happy because kids are running around, doing what they're not supposed to be doing. You heard some of that. The problem being, number one, maybe privacy laws. Number two, transparency of the people that run the programs, the high and mighty programs that we have in the Douglas County and the city council meetings. But the numbers are still up, but you're temporarily sending kids here or there. Occasionally, they send them out of the state. I remember one case juvenile court judge was involved in. The mother wanted to find out where her kids were, and she wasn't allowed. This is the kind of thing that happens. I've been visiting my grandson many times at these homes. You call them different things, but I've observed staff uninterested, sitting around and watching their cell phones. And I've observed parents interseating from over the telephone wires to chew somebody out because their son or their daughter's getting treated differently. But a grandparent like me has no say, absolutely no standing. That's wrong. These, these people that have homes in the neighborhood have absolutely no standing probably in this state, and that's wrong. Now, this gentleman went on and on and on and on. I'm watching the clock because I usually get cut off in five minutes. You make that decision unilaterally. You didn't cut anybody off today.
It's because you're doing well there. You're actually addressing the issue at hand.
Okay. Yeah, you make the decisions yourself. You don't vote on, on those. You call me out of order and have me watched. He marches down the aisle here. I didn't see anybody signal to him to do that.
Stop it. It was your bathroom.
Yeah, Amy, Amy, uh, thank you. But these conversations are going on, and you really don't pay attention to what the citizens are telling you. Now, today I drove down Dodge Street and Douglas Street, just a little ways west.
All right, you gotta keep, keep your remarks to this item.
Just a minute. I get more time too, because they did. Don't treat me differently, okay? Don't treat me differently.
I will treat you differently if you're not...
Thank you, Mr. Vresterson.
You're welcome.
You really do need to resign, sir.
Thank you for your testimony. Any other opponents today? CNN Public hearing is closed. Mr. Brown, I do want to give you a chance to respond to anything you heard there. I will have some questions for you too, but the floor is yours if you want to start.
Oh, well, there's a lot to unpack here. With all due respect to everyone's concerns, so I'm gonna try and address some of the things that I can remember that everyone complained about. Number one, I own the property, and I own the company Nebraska Neurobehavioral Services. However, there seems to be a misunderstanding here. What is there currently? It's not Nebraska Neurobehavioral Services. Let me, let me put that out there. So when they are saying things like, there's an absence of supervision and no one to contact, it's not Nebraska Neurobehavioral Services. When I purchased this property from former Senator Kobe Koash, it was the intention of me turning it into an emergency shelter for adolescent. Why is that? I wrote a dissertation several years ago called Factors That Influence Violent Behaviors Amongst Youth in Omaha, Nebraska. My claim to fame has been my work in this community with adolescent. So I will say I'm a subject matter expert when it comes to that. Now, to address the issue of staffing, you must have staffing on both sides at all times. And it's said that in the document that I sent over to the planning board. I specifically stipulated in it, there has to be a staff on each shift. Now, it's a question in regards to transportation. Yes, Nebraska Neurobehavioral Services, N M B S, is also a Nebraska Public Service Commission licensed transportation company as well. There's a question in regards to where this youth coming from. What is the purpose of the emergency shelter? That's the main question. The purpose of it, I have been a clinician since two thousand and five. I have seen a lot of youth, like the gentleman was saying, sent out of state. In my current business, Nebraska Neurobehavioral Services, we actually have a couple of youths that are waiting for beds to be open in places like Wyoming and Kentucky. What I'm trying to do is fill a void between a youth at home who is having problems, whether it's physical, mental, emotional, sexual abuse, or those who are having behavioral problem who needs services. So what will be that gap in between making a decision whether to send the kid out of state, or Boyce Town, or Omaha Home for Boys, which are primarily only two services that we have in the forty-first largest city in the country? So outside of Boyce Town, Omaha Home for Boys, or the new facility that's been built, options are limited. Outside of the Yes House, what are the emergency shelter services that we have for adolescent? That's pretty much what we have now. So if we're looking at a situation and someone is saying, um, twelve is considered large group living, well, I'm not an expert in that area. I hired an architect who came up with that number, and I guess the planning board also agreed that that was a decent number for that. So I just want the neighbor to understand that your concern about what's there now is exactly what I'm getting rid of by turning the place into an emergency shelter that will be staffed twenty-four hours a day. It has to. The regulation calls for that. It has to be staffed twenty-four hours a day. There has to be supervision. And I will be the one providing clinical oversight for it. So, um, if someone said something about having an eleven-year-old daughter, I totally understand your concern, but when was the last time you've looked in the news and saw that this homicide was committed by a kid who's in a group home? Or this rape or sexual assault was by a kid who's in a shelter? When it's all said and done, this zip code has seventy-seven registered sex offender. That's more of a concern for the neighbors. That's more of a problem for the neighbors, not this kid who needs a place to stay so that we can offer wraparound services such as family support, community treatment aid, supervised visitation, intensive family preservation, before we reinsert them back into the home of origin. That is the purpose of this emergency shelter. So in regards to the opposition, I understand their concern, sometimes, um, not knowing what is coming, it's, you know, uh, fear of the unknown. But there's nothing to be afraid of in an emergency shelter. Someone mentioned age thirteen to eighteen. Well, thirteen is a teenager. So thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, they're teenagers. That's what it is. Someone asked, is it gonna be coed? It's not gonna be coed. Yeah, it's not gonna be coed. But it has to be staffed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. There has to be a house manager who's also responsible. And I will even say, Nebraska Neurobehavioral Services, we have an advisory committee. They are all welcome to be on the advisory committee. If you truly want to know what's happening, you can do, it's open. It's open to the public. Anyone can join the advisory committee. They are free to join it. Whatever concern they have then can actually be, um, addressed internally. Also, um, I, adolescent services is a passion of mine. That's, that's what I've done. That's one thing I know how to do. But, um, and the condition of the property, just so, uh, someone addressed that as well, the people that I deal now are actually moving. There was an email, I got an email from someone, um, who opposed to it, and the person actually called me. And the only thing the person said was, well, we are gonna keep you out. We're gonna keep you out. And I said, well, do you want to know at least what it is? You know, so none of the people who've contacted me actually want to listen to what this is. You know, and I think they have it confused with what is there now. In all fairness, what is there now, which is, um, a transitional living home that's ran by a separate group, uh, off of a transitional living home, this is just a group of adults who rent a room from that individual. So they just paid that person a room and board. That's a transitional living home. That's not what I'm trying to do with it. What I'm trying to do with it is exactly what I'm here for.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I do have some follow-up questions for you, and maybe Mr. Fanslaw, if you want to stay there, and we'll just kind of, maybe I'll alternate a little bit here. So, um, I appreciate the demographic you're trying to serve, and I, I no doubt that, um, that service is required in our community, as you note. I did, though, get several contacts from the neighborhood in the last week of concern, and I think they do ask a lot of good questions that I kind of want to walk, walk through with you here. And I did visit the site over the weekend too, and I can see why it, why it would be concerning. It is, uh, right, kind of a T-section of the two streets, very prominent, uh, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, um, and a pretty large, pretty large duplex. And I also observed the current status was probably less than desirable, um, from what I could tell from the outside. So I want to delve into that a little bit too, but correct, I want to make sure I have this correct. You currently own the property, but do you sublease them to...
Yes.
...these folks, the current operator? And is that current operator leaving?
Yes.
Um, when does that occur?
They are actually securing a place to move to now. So for sure, within the next ninety days, they should be moved, and then we'll go into renovation process.
That's helpful to know, because I believe, Mr. Fanslaw, the current operator, um, who I think has been there for a long time, I think someone had said it, maybe over twenty years, um, can do what they're doing in this, at this site by right of their R-five zoning, right? The current operation.
So I, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, I had, uh, talked to staff after pre-council, and we were unaware of any other use at that site except what would be standard residential. So we didn't have any case history or record of something other than a duplex for, like, two families to live in prior to today.
So from the city's perspective, they're, they are not currently in compliance?
I'm not, again, we're not really sure what they're doing. We haven't, we didn't look at that. If they were grandfathered, we don't know. We just didn't have a record of any other use except for what you would typically see a duplex being.
Okay.
So if they're, I can't say that they're not compliant.
Okay. Sounds like that's something we should definitely be looking into, though, that the paperwork has, suggests that it's trying to, um, move from a small group living disabled to a small group living di- non-disabled.
Well, yeah, with the information that we were provided, but we didn't, we didn't have any record... But we didn't, we didn't have any record of that being approved by any body at the city of Omaha.
Okay. Do you have any, go ahead.
Yeah, let me just chime in again. The operation that is there now has nothing to do with Nebraska Neuro Behavioral Services. But also, let me just.
But you are the property owner?
Yes. Well, let me give you a couple of quick background on that. Prior to when Senator Koash, former Senator Koash worked the property back in '05, it was rented to I L C, which is Integrated Life Choices. So they ran it as a group home. Then it went to R H D, Resource for Human Development. It was a group home for an extended period of time, prior to me buying the place. So I just want that background information.
Yeah, and if, go ahead, Mr. Fester, if I can clarify. We just didn't have any record of that use being at that site.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we definitely need to check on that.
Sure.
But it sounds like, would it be an accurate statement to say regardless of what happens with a special use permit, that occupant is relocated anywhere?
The current occupant, absolutely.
All right. A few other questions. Some of these are ones that Mr. Brandon had brought up, and I was intending to ask. Is there flexibility on your special use permit proposal when we talk about maximum occupancy of 12? In other words, is there flexibility to reduce that maximum number?
Yes, there's flexibility to reduce it. I think the number that was put was based on what the architect said, you know, was allowed. That's where that came from. So, you know, I'm not, not an architect. I'm not on the planning board, so. But, you know, originally, my intention was actually no more than 10. But the architect said that you can do a maximum of 12. So that's where the 12 number came from.
Okay. That might be a topic we want to discuss further. And I think he makes interesting points about large group versus small group in that context. But if it is going to be, you know, 10 or fewer, that sort of answers that question about the designation you're pursuing. And it sounds like would be, you know, a welcome reduction, at least from some of the neighborhood concerns that we're hearing so far. Then you talked about addressing the question of oversight. So, but it was still a bit unclear to me. Are you, are you saying then that there's, there's 24-hour oversight for sure?
Yes.
A staff member does not sleep there, but there'll always be a staff member on duty.
Yes.
Is there a staff member on each side? So two staff members?
Yes, by regulation, there has to be, because technically, it's two separate sides. So you cannot, you know, for example, you cannot have the staff on 3013 also supervise people on 3015. There has to be consistent eyesight.
Okay. So two staff members onsite at all time for 24 hours? That's good. That's also wasn't clear, I think, in the paperwork we have. So that might need to be clarified. And you said single sex?
Single sex.
Per side or?
Yes, males.
All males on both sides?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm checking off some of my list here that I was writing down. That also might address the concern over, if occupancy was reduced, that might also address the concern over square footage per room, potentially. And you did address, I think, a little bit the question of how are these folks referred? Where do they, where are they going to after this transitional time, which is described as, I think, 30 or 60 days? Anything further you want to say on that topic?
When you look at, let me give you an example. So let's say Children and Family Services reach out and say, hey, we have a youth in Lincoln that was just removed from home due to allegation of sexual abuse. We accept the individual into our program. Upon acceptance, my role then is to now meet with the caseworker to kind of figure out, okay, what kind of services do we need to put in the home? It could be, you know, for the next 30 days, supervised visitation, while we get the young person full-scale psychological evaluation or psychiatric evaluation or psychosexual evaluation or full pre-treatment assessment, then determine what kind of services needs to be in the home before the youth go back into the home. So you could have people refer from Children and Family Services. Sometimes you have situations where, you know, Boyce Town gets to a point where youth might be going back home, but the home environment is not immediately suitable for the kid. So it's that bridge in between where services are put in place before the youth goes back home or if a youth is removed from home, where it allows the kid to have a therapist. If it's medication management, those things are set up for the kid before he goes back into the home. So referrals, I know that was, that was a big question. Referrals, and when someone was saying something about coming from detention center. All, I'll say majority of those youths still fall under Department of Health and Human Services. So when we say that referrals come in from Department of Health and Human Services, that's what we mean by that.
And they are the regulator in this instance and have oversight of these type of facilities, right? To the question of an operating plan, though, that comes along with a special use permit, those, Mr. Fanslaw, those permits can be stipulated to follow just the, just the operator, not, not, not the property in, in some cases. Is that correct to say?
That is correct, and we have done that in the past.
And is that true with this particular one right now?
I do not believe so.
So there could be a stipulation is to make, to answer Mr. Brandon's question, we could make a permit only apply to the operator, not the property in this case?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Fanslaw, we talked this morning a little bit about how, if there are major issues in such a situation, how, how is a permit revoked? And there is a process by which a special use permit can be revoked. And it's generally a process that's initiated if an applicant isn't following its operating plan that's part of its special use permit, right?
Sure, yeah. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. There are a few ways that a permit can be revoked or cause a permit to be revoked. That would be operating outside of the submitted operating statement. And we also have some regulators for the use of the property. So if, you know, if there's external effects that's affecting the residential neighborhood around it. So there are a few ways that we could, if we received complaints or if we found out they were operating detrimental to the residential neighborhood or outside of their operating statement, permits can be revoked. That process is a show cause hearing in front of the governing board. So this would be city council. So you'd have a show cause hearing. You would, this body would vote on whether to have a hearing to revoke it. So you'd have a show cause hearing, and then at a later date, you would have a public hearing that could result in revoking the permit.
Okay. So in this example, me, me being the council member from this district, I could initiate that show of cause hearing if I wanted to. Is that a resolution?
It's a good question. I think it is, yes.
Okay. All right. And then that causes the hearing, and then a subsequent item would be considered whether to repeal or not?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then maybe lastly, and I think there's some other lights on for now. So I do find it a little bit concerning that what's there resembles a group home, but maybe it's not really a group home, but we don't really know for sure.
Well, if it wasn't right, if, if permits weren't sought or if, if it was existing and, and we just, I mean, truth is, there are uses out there that we don't know exist, and this could be one of those.
And regardless of that, it's, it's current zoning is R5. So let's just say the current operator is, is moving out in the next, I think you said, 90 days. And if a special permit was not adopted, or for some reason, Mr. Brema decided not to proceed, that property still has R5 zoning, so it still is, still is a duplex. It would require the owner to seek a change in that zoning if they wanted to do, say, single-family homes, right?
Well, single-family is allowed in R5. So it's zoned R5 probably because it's a duplex. Duplex is an allowed use in R5. So if, let's just, in this example, if, if the use went away, it could be used as two duplexes or a duplex, two, two units or one unit on each side.
Could also be a single family if the owner chose?
If they wanted to make those revisions to the interior, yes.
Okay. With no other zoning changes?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. You know, I think there's a lot, there's a lot here, both in terms of what's being proposed and the details around it, and lots of questions from the neighborhood, obviously, still. Some aware of it, I think, probably from the public, no assistance to planning board, but probably many not. So, you know, I would at least recommend we lay this over today for further conversation about some of these details to see if there is some common ground or middle ground with the applicant and neighbors. I can't make that motion, but probably what I would suggest today for at least a couple of weeks. I suppose the last question before I recognize somebody else, Mr. Brema, was there ever a meeting with the neighborhood, or was there ever a session where we could, they could kind of hash through all this stuff?
It's difficult to have a meeting if no one is willing to hear you out. Okay? That's difficult. And obviously, I, like, I, I could listen to everything that was said. 99% of it was misinformation. So you have to listen to the person that's trying to do it. Though calls I've gotten, and I remember getting a call, and I told them about a meeting I was having at our office, 10306 Ellison Circle. No one showed up. The only thing that was said to me was, we're going to keep you out. We're going to keep you out. That's about it. And like I just said, my advisory committee is wide open. You can join. So I don't know what else to say to anybody. When they say the advisory committee is open, you can join. Your concerns can, you, when you join the advisory committee, you actually have a say in what we do and what goes on. That's regular meetings. That happens. You have a say in it. You can voice your opinion in it.
Is that advisory committee, like, per property, or how do you do it?
For the company itself.
Okay. I might suggest, I mean, I know this can be a difficult topic, and sometimes these conversations can be difficult. But I do think it's important that the conversation happens specific to this property and to the details we're trying to hash out today, because it's difficult to hash them out here at the lectern on a, on a public hearing day, right? Plus, I think the neighborhood does deserve to, to know those details, and hopefully, there's some reasonable middle ground that folks can, can discuss. So with that, I'll move on now. I'll recognize Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm concerned about a couple of things here. And I'm sure everyone in the room is concerned about it. When did you decide to move the current occupants out of the, out of this duplex and then start your operation?
Then that process started earlier this year.
Like, can you be more specific?
If I have to put a month on it, I said February, March.
So February of this year?
Yeah.
So February 2022, perhaps you reached out to who here in City Planning? Or the city of Omaha? Who did you talk to here?
Uh, I think Robert LaRocco, something like that. I think that's his name.
Sounds right.
So you spoke with Robin, and do you recall that conversation, what took place? I mean, you know, you came in, said you were interested in doing this. And can you kind of recap what, what that conversation looked like?
The bulk of the conversation was via email. I think we spoke on the phone maybe two or three times at the most. And I told him what I was trying to do with the property. And he pretty much directed me to how to pull the application, fill the application out, and gave me information on that I will need an architect, Nebraska licensed architect, to help draw out the plans for what it is we're trying to do. So that was the bulk of that conversation. And I put in the application, came to one hearing, then I think the hearing was laid over, if that's what, if that's the proper term. Then I think the second time, I wasn't here, but someone from my team came. And that's when, I believe, the planning board recommended for approval. And I think the last time I spoke to Robert LaRocco was probably a couple of weeks ago when I emailed him to ask, okay, now what next? Then he said, then now you have to go in front of city, city council.
So during the planning stages, were you encouraged to begin having public engagement, neighborhood engagement, conversations? Did we, as a city, encourage you to have those kind of conversations about what your intentions were?
Yes, you did. And I think in my application, my emails with Robert, I actually sent them a flyer that I had made that I had someone go put out for me, which I actually got a call from one of the property owners from the neighborhood that reached out about what I was doing. So I think, you know, it, it's, for me, regardless of how it was viewed, I felt like, you know, I, I'm an open book. You know, my, the emails that I had back and forth, I put my phone number in there. I offered to do a Zoom call. One of the emails say I don't do Zoom, you know? So it's when you reach out and say, hey, you know, my office is at such and such place. That's where we have vocational sites and a day program. You know, come here, let's, let's talk about it. But, you know, people are saying that we're going to keep you out and, you know, it's, it's, makes it difficult.
So approximately, how many people did you reach out to?
That I spoke to via email, I think there was emails with three individuals. I had three phone calls, and all three actually called me.
And do you know who the neighborhood president or the neighborhood association is in that area in which you reside, your duplex?
No.
Okay. Or you offered that by us here at the city, who the neighborhood association president was, the neighborhood?
I was, I was just told, you know, reach out to the neighbors. So I made a flyer, and I had someone say, hey, take this flyer, just put it out. So hopefully, we get some traction on it.
So we gave you no resources to who to reach out to, say, 15 people, 20 people? You just went willy-nilly and reached out to whoever, neighbor? To, you, you had no tools, you had no basis to reach out to anyone?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So you reached out to three people, and, you know, with that small of pool of individuals to work from, it would be fair to say that those three individuals were not open to listening. You just happened to pick three people that wasn't open to listening?
Correct.
Had you had a wider pool, maybe those outcomes would have been different.
Possibly.
So with that being said, and me being a proponent of in poor neighborhoods where we have to count on our neighborhood associations, count on their effectiveness to work free of charge in a neighborhood to bridge the gap, to keep things in a uniform way, in a collective way, to keep neighborhoods engaged and working together. The neighborhood association sets that foundation, that bridge that the police oftentimes doesn't offer because they don't have the resources to be around and, and gather people and kind of have them make those kind of connections and, and work together as a team. So to me, it's very important to elevate individuals that work, did, work hard and tirelessly to work those relationships in a neighborhood, to work together, because things like this that come in a neighborhood that you're offering a vital service that's needed in our community to help with our children, is very vital. But it's also vital to be able to keep that cohesiveness in that neighborhood working together as well. So it's a balancing act. And if you had those tools, perhaps you could have navigated what you were about to bring into that neighborhood a lot easier. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Correct.
So you've had a lot of hurdles that you had to deal with, and your neighbor, and the neighbors that are in this area had a lot of hurdles to deal with because they didn't know, most of them didn't know, that you were presenting or bringing this. because they didn't know, most of them didn't know that you were presenting or bringing this change about in their neighborhood. So quite naturally, as humans, change is very frustrating. We don't like embracing change. We're gonna kick against change no matter what. Because especially when we don't have enough information to tell us anything differently. So again, having that engagement with the neighbors that were already there, they're, they're gonna be there whether you stay there a year or not. They're gonna, most often, they're gonna be there. So that kind of conversation needs to happen. So I'm in agreement with the president, Mr. Festerston, that we should lay this over. So I move that we lay this over so that we can have that engagement, introduce what you're offering to the neighbors and try to find that common ground so that this relationship that may or may not happen is, starts off on a good foot.
Is that for two weeks?
Two weeks.
I'll second that. Ms. Johnson, are you done?
Yes.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
On, on the motion, the second, I guess I'd offer a friendly amendment to that to continue the public hearing.
I did close the public hearing. Can, can that be part of a motion at this point? I think we could do it either way. We could do it that way or just call up people like we, like we normally do.
I, I, well, I'm, I'm asking if you would take that as a friendly amendment. It's to, to continue the public hearing. Because part of the reason for that is if we're trying to encourage or to have more conversations, more people know about this, then they should have the opportunity to come and say their word.
Okay, fine with that. Okay. So that's your motion?
Yes.
And that's my second. And did you want the floor, Mr. Harding?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Thanks. And I, I'm, this has been kind of clarifying, I'll say educational too, because I, I was under the impression that this was going to be an expansion of the, the current services that were being provided. And I, I think that was maybe a little cloudy to, to many of us. And I appreciate the, the opportunity to have this discussion to, to clarify that. So I've got a list of questions here. I'll, I'll try to keep it, keep it in orders as much as I can. But I'll, I'll start with you, Doctor. So the, the current residents that are there, how, how would they be similar to your clientele if, if at all?
There's no similarities.
Okay.
No similarities.
All right. And then the, the current level of security, I'll say rather, because you've just said that the services are gonna be different. But so the current level of security seems to be of concern to many of the neighbors. How, how would that change going forward? And again, that, that, it's gonna probably tie back into my question on the operating statement, but go ahead if you would.
Um, transition to living home is usually group of adults who rents a room, right? They rent a room. Whoever's operating the place just go in and check on things, making sure, whatever their system is, right? So, but there's adults who need a place to stay who just pay room and board. The difference with what I'm doing now actually requires licensing, which is how you apply for the license, the neighbors are notified, say, hey, this is what's coming. But in this situation, there's twenty-four hour staffing. I've always been a big supporter of making sure there's, there's exterior cameras. So there'll be cameras, there's staffing. And the most important level of supervision is having adequate staffing available to properly staff the location and having your house managers available on call as well.
Okay, so, but then specifically on, on, well, I guess maybe the security issues. I mean, how, how would, how would breaches in, in what you have set up be handled? Uh, it sounds like maybe in the past, I probably should have gone at this backwards from where I'm, I'm going. But in, in the past, if there have been some breaches of security, it doesn't sound like they were handled properly. And, and I just wanted to maybe have you on the record explain how going forward that those kind of issues would be handled. How would, how would people be able to get a hold of, of you or your, your, whoever the manager is on site or of the site to make sure that those concerns are being addressed?
In this, once, hopefully we get to a point where the place actually opens, inside on the wall, it would have the supervisor's phone number on the wall and have my contact information. And if you go on our website, nbservices.com, you can see our phone number is on there. You know, so getting a hold of someone, it's not difficult at that point because this is a state regulated program, you know? And filing a complaint is also not difficult at that point because of the same reason.
Okay. And then maybe if you would just stay there for a minute, but I, I think this message, or this question's more for Mr. Fanslow. Would a reduction of the number of clients less than twelve, if it were ten or, or something less than that, would, would that change the application for the special use permit? And/or would then it have to go either back through planning board's approval and then back to us? Or does it even, would it, would it get to a point where maybe it's a conditional use permit or even allowed by, by right if it gets to a certain number?
Dave Fanslow, City Planning. Non-disabled group living facilities always require a special use permit.
Okay. Regardless of the number of occupants?
Correct. The, the reduction in numbers, it's not, the, the code says eight or less per dwelling unit. So each side of the duplex is its individual dwelling units. That's why it's smaller group living and not a large group living facility.
Okay. And then, so Mr. Fanslow, I, I have you then. If the, the special use permit runs with the, the operator and not the property, correct?
It runs with the property.
Not the operator?
Correct.
Is?
You can make it.
Well, so, but that was gonna be my next question. So go ahead and answer.
You could, we've, there's been conditions placed on use permits in the past that it is approved subject to the current operator and not to run with the land.
Okay. And if that current operator were to sell the business, that would then require, the special permit then could not just be passed with the sale of the business. It would have to go through to get approval for the new operator.
It would have to come through the entitlement process again, yes.
Okay, thanks. Doctor, so the, the operating statement, when I, when I first read through what I think is the operating statement, I'll ask you. So the, the information that you provided in, in your materials, once titled Neuro-Behavioral Services of Nebraska, and it says edited partially July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do you know the, the document I'm referring to?
The one that I have said edited Tuesday, September sixth, unless there's just, what does the, does the first page look like this?
The first page starts with just, actually, it doesn't really even have a title. It just says A. And that says provided, starts provided, provide additional information on the operation and accessibility of the site and programs offered to the site, include information related to how clients.
Yes.
Okay, so is this document your operating statement?
No, I was just told put something together at that moment to, so that people can have something to look at or get a better understanding of what, what we actually do.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification. Where is the operating statement?
And it's at my office and copied on my laptop. If you want me, I can email that to everyone.
I mean, typically that would be a, one of the items to be submitted with this. So maybe I'll ask Mr. Fanslow. Was, was there not an operating statement submitted with this when it was before planning board? Or do we just not have a copy of that?
There were, the operating statement that we received the first time around was not sufficient. And then we did get an, an updated one, so it was able to be put back on the planning board agenda.
Okay, and I, maybe I'm, I'm missing it in, in here, but I don't know that we have a copy of, of what. So again, maybe with the, with the, the layover, we can see that operating statement. Because again, I, I think the operating statement is, is what we would use. That's the instrument we would use if there are, if, if we find that there may be cause for consideration of revocation of the special use permit. So I think it's important for us to have the most updated operating statement. Would you, you'd agree, I would assume?
I would agree.
Okay. So maybe during this period, this layover period, in addition to something else I'm gonna bring up, we need to make sure that we have the most current operating statement for this facility. Okay? All right, thanks. And then, and then actually, so now you, you brought up the point on the misinformation that, that might be out there. And and I, and I understand you're, you're maybe not wanting to do, you know, kind of a neighborhood meeting. I know you, you tried before, maybe with, with the distribution of the flyers and got limited response. I have a feeling if, if you went through the process again and maybe had it, had the meeting in, in a location maybe closer to, to the site, I think you'd, you'd have a little better kind of response this time. And I think it gives you an opportunity to dispel some of the disinformation that, that people are running around with because they have, they have no other op, they have no other information otherwise. I have no, anyway, I think you get my point. I think I got too many otherwise's in there. But I think it would be, I, I think it would behoove you to go through that process again. Because really, I think you have a good story. And this isn't the same type of clientele that maybe you're currently there. And again, so that's, that's what these people, that's what the neighbors, that's their history. That's what they, they've been living with. And I think what you're offering is something different. And I think they, I think if they know that and they understand that and they understand it's licensed and they understand, you know, the level of security that you're talking about, I think those are all things that people with, maybe with that information could, could embrace something like this. So I, I think I would really encourage you to go through that process again and, and have, have kind of a neighborhood meeting so that you can address some of these issues.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Well, first I, I wanna agree that we, we have kids that are on waiting lists. They're being sent out of town to other states. I have a current client that may be getting sent to Nevada and I'd love to keep her here so that she can actually have time with her family. But I also wanna say that a number of these kids that are waiting for placement are also in violation of probation and they are sitting in the, in the juvenile detention center. And so I can also understand why the neighbors don't necessarily want to have twelve of them next door. I mean, I, that's, and that's exactly what you're asking of the neighbors. I, I mean, I, I don't know that, that anybody wants to have a, a mini, you know, juvenile detention center next door to their house. And I think that's, that's what the neighbors are being presented with at this point. And I, and by the way, I know that, I know this neighborhood and I know a lot of the constituents because at one time this was part of my district. And so, you know, I kind of, I share the concerns and I, and I understand the neighborhood. It's a, it's a great neighborhood. There's kids and families. Now, perhaps at some point, Dr. Bommer, that maybe this could be a part of the neighborhood. But again, the lack of, of meetings with the neighborhood and the lack of interaction. Now, I don't think that, you know, a mom with an eleven-year-old, she might not necessarily want to be on your advisory board. But I think she wants information to make sure that her eleven-year-old's gonna be safe. And I think it's reasonable information for her to want without having to commit to being on an advisory board. And I can tell you that I, I have had an instance and for the neighbors, if this is none, if this is a disabled home, even for kids, they don't need our special use permit. So I just wanna let you know, the only problem with our current laws is be careful what you keep out because you could get something worse. I've got a, a disabled group home. The owners weren't making sure that the disabled persons weren't getting out. The staff was not trained. And basically, the residents of the, of the home just became a complete menace for the entire neighborhood. To the point of I had a family calling me at eleven-thirty at night terrified because a giant boulder had just been thrown through their window. They have a four-year-old. Then their cameras were destroyed. The staff was not maintaining the house. The staff was not controlling the people that were in there. And my fear is that this is exactly what this neighborhood could get. And we had the police responding multiple times per week. The problem is there's nothing the city could do to stop that home from operating. Fortunately, what we're hoping is that there's going to be kids moving in and we won't have the, kind of the violent adults that were staying there. But you could very well get some violent kids. You're also getting a number of kids. I mean, would, do you wanna come, come up and, and address any of that? Because you don't necessarily control who and what you're getting. And the importance of the, of the staff being on time. I mean, at this house we just had, I think the staff might have been throwing as many parties as the residents or vice versa. I'm not sure. But we, there was major staffing issues. And you know what the number one problem was? Number one, the neighborhood didn't really have anyone to contact. They didn't have a twenty-four seven line. And if it takes a city council member having to call in order to get somebody actually to call them back, that's a problem. And that's why I think the neighborhood meeting is so very important. So now we're back to having a second meeting, but, you know, four months later and a lot of heartache later and a lot of anger and distrust. Now we just had another meeting where they're talking about safety plans and how they're going, going to fix some things. Still not fixed though. And so in today's economy, we have low unemployment and, you know, hopefully you're paying your people well. But can you guarantee the neighbors that you're gonna have qualified staff all the time to make sure that, that the kids living here aren't gonna start causing the problem that maybe got them put there in the first place?
Thank you. I can tell you are very knowledgeable in this area by, by the things you have said. And to kind of go back to something that Councilman Festerston asked originally in regards to permits and licensing, when it is used as a developmental disability type of group home, they usually, there's no additional requirement, you know, that they have to jump through hoops. Unlike what I'm trying to do right now, which is highly regulated. Obviously, that's why I'm in front of you because of that reason. And there's also a lot of accountability because if Dope's problem comes up again, I have to come back here again due to people calling, filing complaints. Can I hundred percent guarantee anything? No. Can I make sure my staff are trained? Yes, that I can do. Do we have guidelines for what we look for in their background checks? Yes. Do we have a list of training curriculum? Yes, we have those things. Like anything else in life, sometime people get to a point where they get too comfortable. But that's where oversight comes in. That's where the supervisors or the house manager pop-ups comes in. That's where when neighbors call to complain about something, that's when that gets someone like me involved. You know? The reason why I brought up the advisory, advisory board when I offered it is to let people know that this is, that, that's nothing been hidden. It's wide open, you know? I would love to explain what it is, the, the ultimate goal. I would love to share my dissertation with all of them. So you can see that this is not just something that I just came up with. This is something that I have, that I wrote about. So I'm putting it into practice.
And I understand, but I also, and I do, I, I do work in juvenile court and I do work with families and kids that could even potentially be placed there, like I said.
Correct.
Like I said, you know, yeah, we're, we're sending a number of kids out of state. I would like to keep them here and we don't have the resources to keep them here. And soon we're going to have even less beds in our juvenile detention center. In fact, less beds than we have currently inside our juvenile detention center now, but I digress on that one. And it's a concern. It's a big concern. So I like what you're trying to do, but I also know the reality of the circumstances that you're going to have 12 kids in there that have contacts that aren't necessarily good contacts and there may be some that are going to change their mind, decide they don't want to be there. You're going to have outside people trying to come over at all times, just because you have visiting times. They're going to have friends or other members of groups.
Yes.
That may come and try and visit them and that could create havoc for the neighbors. And you know, you know what I'm saying?
Correct.
You know that's a reality.
Yes. Visitation time is limited to family members only. That, that is a fact. Visitation is limited to family members only. Even phone calls is based on approved contacts. You know, can I control a youth saying, screw this, I don't want to be here, I'm running off?
Right. And they, and they find ways to contact through Facebook and social media and they make up their own social media.
Correct.
Pages to contact the people they want. I mean, but they're smarter than we are when it comes to that and sometimes can be a little manipulative to figure that out. So I'm just saying, but because of those realities that we have to face, those are the things that the neighbors may have to face too.
Concernable.
And so a, as you move forward, there, there are going to be those things that, that their, their friends, there are people that they may call their friends, maybe coming by at different times of the night. And just because you have visitor hours, they don't always follow that. And the kids that are living there aren't necessarily always going to be cooperative. They, they're going through some trauma on their own.
Correct.
Which sometimes can cause them to make bad decisions or they have people that are encouraging them to make bad decisions on the outside. So those are all things that you're going to have to be dealing with that you haven't had to deal with at this location. So potentially this loca, what you're doing here could be better for the neighbors, but it also could be a lot worse. And so I, I think it's that, that unknown that we're unaware of, but I can tell the neighbors, at least in this particular case, we have the ability to bring them back up and we do have the ability to revoke the special use permit. If it remains the disabled residential center it does, we don't have. There is no special use for that. So I would, I would encourage the neighbors to be open-minded when you're meeting with him as well, just knowing those options because a lot of people didn't, don't know that. It's only for this that they need special use. For disabled residential, they do not. So what's currently going on, they don't need a special use permit for. I encourage a big neighborhood meeting. I know that the planning board has attached to our, attached to our agenda was 47 addresses. So I know the planning board provided at least 47 addresses and the neighborhood association, two you, not just three. Planning board provided you with all the tools and the people and the opportunity to connect, so please use that.
I will.
And connect with them.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. There's none for the lights. There is a motion and a second to lay over for two weeks. The last thing I would say before calling for that vote is I don't mean to volunteer you, Mr. Brandon, but you're the one that reached out to me initially and I think has done a lot of legwork and a lot of research on this issue. Might you be willing to continue to serve as a, a contact point for the immediate neighbors?
Yeah, although.
You can come down if you want. There's also a neighborhood association, I'll point out, the Maple Village Neighborhood Association, who's very active and led by Linda Boers. But they do represent a very broad area there, 90th Street to 680 and Maple to Fort.
Yeah. And as Amy Melton pointed out, there are only 45 or so. I, I, I'm not completely sure because like I said, I, about a block and a half away from where the facility is going to be, those people were not contacted. They're outside of that 600 feet somehow, even though, you know, there are a lot of the very people who had complained that with the existing use that they saw a lot of adverse activity in, in their areas. I, I canvassed the neighborhood and put out about 40 flyers over the weekend and my email address was on there. I don't know, you know, well, and I begged people to reach out to you, Ms. Fristerson. I don't know how many contacts you may have had.
Several.
But, yeah, I'll certainly do whatever I can do. If, if I, if I could suggest that one of the reasons why, why I'm here is that it, it is your passion, but the, it was difficult to glean exactly what you were doing from the materials put into the public record. And then there were changes asked for and then, so right now, the current state of things is that I'm not really completely sure what your operating plan is.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would suggest, and the reason why I asked if you'd be willing to do that, so the two of you can connect on those details and also share them with us. And should there be a meeting called, and I think that's the direction we're providing, I'd be willing to attend and, and see what we can work out together.
So you're talking about like the, the neighbor, the meeting with the neighbors?
Yes.
Someone will have to provide a facility for that to happen, though I don't have a big enough garage or whatever.
Yeah.
All right.
You bet. Did you want to address that location question?
I'll provide a facility for it.
Okay, great. That'd be welcome. All right.
I just wanted to let you know that I'm out of town on the 15th. In the event that the council would want to lay it over a little longer for the neighborhood meeting to happen and so that we have a full council vote on this special use permit.
Okay. Appreciate that. Mr. Harding, turn your light on again.
I had a similar concern, sitting here thinking that with, is two weeks really enough? I suppose, I suppose if it's not, we can always lay it over again, but, but two, well, I know that, yeah, because then we have two weeks off.
Yeah, that was my thought. There is, for folks that don't know, the city council calendar, there are, there are meetings the first, 8th and the 15th, and then the 6th, 13th and the 20th. But I think two weeks is a reasonable first step here and if we need to do it longer, we can do it longer. Is that amenable to folks? Okay. All right, that's the motion and that's the second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Row.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President. Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
Item 19, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow a broadcasting tower in the R5 district with a waiver to section 55-206 height located at 2002 M Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Roth, Great Plains Land Services, 508 North Polk Circle, Papillion, Nebraska. I'm here representing the applicant, Omaha Cellular Telephone Company, doing business as Verizon Wireless regarding a communication facility at 2002 M Street. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have, so.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 20, to consider a Class D liquor license for Bucky Dexter's located at 4213 South 84th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Hearing on behalf of the applicant, this is just a transfer. The current location has been their license for 25 years and this is just a transfer, so happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, seven to zero. Item 21, to consider a Class D liquor license for Flying Timber located at 1507 Farnham Street. The applicant has requested a layover to November 15th.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, I meant motion to layover.
Until November 15th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 22, to consider a Class D liquor license for Good Stop 6132 located at 3909 North 132nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 22 is today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom. Okay. Mr. Thompson, we'll get you off mute here in a second. Okay? Try that.
This is Gerald Thompson on behalf of Casey's 4822 South 143rd. I'm here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 is approved, seven to zero. Item 23, to consider a liquor license addition application for Hall 31 located at 3602 South 31st Street to add an outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number 23 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Marissa, Marissa Flag with Hall 31 at 3602 South 31st Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68105, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 23 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items 24 through 32 were held on October 25th. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
There's been a request to remove item number 39 off our consent agenda. So first, we'll have the public hearings on agenda items 33 through 38 and 40 and 41. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address and who you represent and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Hello. Evan Schweitz at Metro Transit, 2222 Coming Street, here to express support for item 40 and answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, public hearings are closed? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 39, a resolution to approve a purchase from Lenko Industries, Inc. in the amount of $341,678 for a Lenko Bearcat G3 armored vehicle for the Omaha Police Department Emergency Response Unit.
Public hearing and vote on number 39 is today. Proponents, please. Deputy Chief Gray.
Good afternoon, council. Scott Gray, Deputy Chief, Omaha Police Department, over Uniform Patrol Tactical Operations. With me is Lieutenant Jake Ratonia, Commander of the SWAT Unit. Today, with your permission, I'll start with just a brief overview for the need for this purchase, kind of some of the history behind it, and then Lieutenant Ratonia can provide some more specifics on kind of a comparison of the, of what we have now, what we're proposing to purchase and, and some more details on the specific need. All right, so this is what we're currently proposing to purchase. This is a Lenko G3 Bearcat armored truck. It, contrary to some of the social media chatter, is not a tank, it's not a military vehicle, it's not designed for combat operations. This vehicle is specifically designed for law enforcement work. It is built on a Ford F-550 chassis, so it's basically a commercial truck with a protective skin on it, if you will. It's not a whole lot different than what you see there, an armored bank truck. In fact, that truck is actually probably a little bit heavier than what, and bigger than what we're proposing. So the current, currently we have an armored vehicle. It is all, it's a Bearcat, it's just a previous model, it's about 17 years old. Lieutenant Ratonia will provide some specifics on some of the issues we've had with it, but it's an old vehicle, it's starting to get into a lot of maintenance issues, wear and tear just due to the weight of the vehicle, size issues, it's much smaller than, than what we currently need. And then just how this new vehicle will, will fit our needs better going forward. The goal is to replace the current vehicle with, with the, the new G3 model, hopefully get a few more years of service out of the, the current one, but it's going to be end of life fairly soon due to its, its age and, and wear issues. Also, the, the current build time for a new one is roughly a year, so that's kind of why we want to get started on this now because we're not going to see this thing till probably close to 2024. We've used our current model as early as, well, we've used it this morning on a couple high-risk warrants, so we use it quite often. It is a protective vehicle for our officers, it keeps them safe. It has been shot at as recently as a year ago and Lieutenant Ratonia will go into the details of that incident. But it is not in any way some kind of offensive military vehicle like it's been portrayed by, by some. I would like to, to point out also that the, the funding for this is, it's in the 2023 police budget. It's already approved for 2023. We're moving up the purchase because of the recruit class that was supposed to start in September was delayed until January. That kind of freed up some funding. So basically, if you will, there's basically a swap of funding between the, the two, two years to, to cover this. So we would like to do a, basically a general budget purchase this year using some of that money that would have been normally used for the recruit class. It does not impact staffing in any way. It does not impact any other budget items. It doesn't impact, there's been talk about impacting mental health resources, doesn't impact that in any way, shape or form. Right now, our mental health program, the coordinator is a city employee now. Next year, half of the coresponders will be shipped, transitioned into city employees and then the following year, the other half will transition into city employees. So the, the funding for that is set and taken care of. Like I said, this is, it's just basically a shift from 2023 funding back to this year to get, get it accomplished a little bit sooner. With that, I would like to turn it over to Lieutenant Ratonia for some more specifics on, on the need and the difference between the two models and then obviously take any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, chief. I'm Jake Ratonia. Thanks to the council for having us here. So the, our team is the busiest team in the metro and probably the region. We deployed 137 times last year and virtually every single time that we deployed, we took our current Bearcat with us. Some of the things we're responsible for, high-risk warrant service, barricades, hostage Some of the things we're responsible for, high-risk warrant service, barricades, hostage rescue, which we just had one last week, event protection for CWS, Memorial Park Concert, things like that, dignitary protection. Our team has a track record of safety. We haven't had an officer-involved shooting involving SWAT operation over fifteen years. Our current Bearcat, like I said, it goes out with us. The reason why we bring it out with us is last year during those operations, we encountered firearms seventy-four point six percent of the time during our high-risk warrant service or barricade operations. Having that armor there allows us to use safer tactics. And what I mean by that is, even if we're shot at, it gives us the opportunity to stay safe and maybe use a lesser, less lethal options, or to kind of de-escalate some things so that we don't have to take any kind of lethal action. Like the chief said, we were shot at in 2021 during a barricade. This was a suspect in an apartment complex who shot at the first responding officers. They issued a citywide help, a lot of resources headed that way, including us. When we got there and tried to use some less lethal, he did shoot at us. Because we had the Bearcat there, we were safe, we were protected behind it. He ultimately, we were able to get him out of the residence and got him to surrender. So things like that are, is exactly why we need that piece of equipment there. Right now, we only have two primary SWAT vehicles. We've got a Sprinter van, which is not armored, that deploys most of our personnel, and then we've got our Bearcat. Now, that Bearcat's supposed to, it's supposed to hold up to ten personnel. The reason why it can't hold ten personnel is because of the equipment that we carry in it. So this is kind of two shots of the back of the vehicle, but here's how everything lays out when we pull it out. So this is all the necessary equipment that we have to bring because we have to plan for all sorts of different contingencies when we're there. Right now, our current Bearcat's a two thousand and six. It's a two thousand and six, and so this is where, a photo of it, obviously when we're doing a vehicle display for the community. It's approaching seventeen years old. While it only has thirty-five thousand miles, that F-four fifty chassis that it was built on has had eighteen thousand pounds of armor sitting on it that entire time. Over that time, that weight has taken, has taken a toll on the suspension, the brakes, the motor. Just in the last two years, we had two instances of what we call death wobble, where the steering wheel shook so violently that the truck almost craned out of control. And so having an eighteen thousand pound vehicle going down Dodge, losing control is obviously a concern to us. It only has two spotlights. That's very hard for us because we don't always get to pick how we orient the vehicle on a residence. They're old spotlights, they're not like the new nice LEDs. We have no cameras on it. It's mainly designed to be driven on road, and so if we get into a situation where we have to go, say, search for an armed party out in the field, we're very lary to take it off-road in that condition. Last week, when we did have that hostage rescue during a barricade, our truck was down for maintenance. I had to call the FBI to use their truck, and then I also had to call Pot County Sheriff to use, to call for a very specialized piece of equipment that was also armored. The new truck, obviously, is going to be a replacement for the old, it needs to be reliable. Some of the things that the new one brings to the table, it's a four-door, it's built on a diesel turbo F-five fifty chassis, has better brakes and a much better motor to handle that personnel and equipment, so we can fit more personnel in there. That G-three package is meant to be driven off-road, and so if we have to go search for someone through a field, if we have to drive around the backside of a house to use it for protection, the chances of getting stuck are going to be a lot less. Some of the other things that we're going to have on there, three hundred and sixty-degree camera system with the DVR, which is going to document what we're doing, it's going to record anything that we might have to do. The new truck has, I believe, a total of ten lights. We've got four spotlights, we've got alley lights, we've got takedown lights. Basically, we can use light as a tactic to keep us safe when we're operating in front of something. It's got, some of the things that are plaguing our current truck is corrosion. We're in Nebraska, a lot of salt, the armor's starting to rust. The new truck will have bedrock paint for better corrosion resistance. It's going to have a larger capacity fuel cell, so if we're stuck out on an operation for a long period of time, it can idle and it can keep us safe inside. Have better AC and heating just for the occupants inside. Things like that are what's going to make the difference as we move forward. Like I said, this, we've often said on the team, this truck isn't for us, it's for the next generation. We're, I've been with the department now for coming up on twenty-four years, but we have young SWAT officers that need to go out there and be able to use it. Yeah, that is pretty much it in terms of the differences between the two trucks, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today?
Lieutenant, how are you, sir?
Good, sir, how you doing?
How'd that? Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, forty-nine twenty-eight North Fifty-second Street. I have one objection to them having this truck, so I'll just make it real clear. We want another three hundred and fifty thousand added for the security guard of the interest on these buildings, this building, the Civic Center, and the Douglas County building, because those, the security system in those buildings are obsolete. We have so many things coming at these officers who are coming into the Douglas County, and we prefer them to chase Judge Roy Bean, but we have to protect him as well. But in the meantime, I've noticed when I come to the building, Douglas County, it's not like when I was a kid, I come in, I say, Judge, no, I was not speeding, the officer got it mixed up, but I didn't have to go through all the security, though. So if you can add addition three hundred or fifty thousand or whatever it takes to do a survey, or what would we call that, to help those guys that's letting people come in and go out, do you think that the thing, the system that we have now is good? It's awful. I told a guy today, some guy, in fact-
All right, Donnie, we're talking about an equipment purchase, right?
Yeah. What about the security guards coming in here? Because I said, if the judge is so scared to come to work, then what about the security guards? We've got to let them come in here, and they get all these disease. So we need to put that into place as well. So if you're going to get them a truck, can you help the security guards at the Civic Center, the Zarensky Building, and the Douglas County Court Building, where some of my friends who helped me grow up, to keep me out of trouble? I also want to look out for the security guard, even though they are not as smart as us Navy guys, but it's, we still have to look out for them.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents for number thirty-nine? Seeing none any opponents.
Hello, my name is Alex Hayden, and I live at twenty-three eighteen North One Hundred Forty-third Avenue, or Councilwoman Melton's problem. I am here because I support law enforcement. I am not here as a voice for some of the honestly gross social media discourse that has been had around this vehicle. I am here because we have a twin crises with our law enforcement officers, and they are honestly our own creation. One of them is mental health, where our officers are being asked to address a ever-growing list of problems. And the other is legitimacy in the eyes of the public. And militarization of our police officers worsens our standing on both of those fronts. And as I've said, this is not a military vehicle. They have a vehicle that is getting old, it needs to be replaced. There is certainly no shortage of funds for it. You know, even if there was, they're asking for basically eighty cents per resident. I'm sure we can all afford eighty cents to keep our first responders safe. But sometimes perception is reality. And there has been a lot of commotion about this, and what they're asking for is a unique and non-competitive bid. And that unique and non-competitive bid is not necessarily in line with the things that they say they are running to in the field. We certainly want the safety of our police officers. But part of that safety is the legitimacy in the eyes of the public. And if we take a careful, deliberate approach to how we buy these large vehicles that are perceived by the public as further militarization, then we put our officers ultimately in worse danger. I have friends, not on Omaha Police Department, but with the Sheriff's Office and with Corrections, and they would certainly be the first to say that the city can and should do more for their mental well-being and for their community outreach. And a step like this, while certainly affordable, makes those other efforts that we need, that are important for the continuing function of our city, for the maintenance of law and order here in Omaha, is really set back by a purchase like this. We don't necessarily need something that looks an awful lot like an armored Hummer. We need to protect our officers. But does that mean that we need this unique and non-competitive bid? Or can we be looking at other ways to keep our officers safe? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, public safety is a priority of this administration, and you guys don't need to stand up yet. Just so, I might have a couple of minutes here. You know, it's a priority, I know this administration is of mine as well, and, you know, recently, this council approved the purchase of, you know, modern needed equipment for fire department so that we would ensure that the men and women of our fire force would be able to have the requisite tools to do their job, and to make sure that public safety was first and foremost. And the police are asking us, they're here before us today, asking for approval for the ability to purchase this piece of equipment, which, much like fire, will allow the men and women of our police department to have the tools necessary to protect and serve the public. This is not a tank. I'll refer maybe to, a little bit to Mr. Hayden's comments of, I would agree with, you know, the social media, some of the pictures I saw on social media of what we were asking for were astounding. I mean, it's obviously an attempt to, to control a conversation of misinformation, to dissuade the public from knowing what this really is. I mean, we had a picture of Deputy, Deputy Chief Gray put up a picture of, of kind of a prototype of what this, what this is, and comparing it to kind of what we have today, which is over fifteen years old. It does look like a Brink's truck, or a bank, a truck you'd see at the bank, or servicing an ATM, or going to Target. I mean, this is, this is not a tank. So I wanted to make sure we had that on record, too, but I appreciate Mr. Hayden's comments about that and the influence that social media can have on this, but... And it's, I think Lieutenant Ratonia said that, you know, it sits on the same chassis that, you know, one of those bank trucks sits on. I don't know if it's a F-four fifty or F-five fifty, but regardless, I mean, it sits on the same, similar chassis. And it's not, this is not a new purchase either. I've gotten a lot of emails about, we don't need to have, you know, this new equipment to be, you know, to militarizing our police force, and it's, this is a replacement vehicle of something that's, you know, like I said, over fifteen years, and I'm sure if I went to replace, I don't even know if Ford makes a Taurus anymore, but if I went to make, replace my Ford Taurus from, you know, two thousand and six, it would look a little different today than it did back then, but it essentially serves the same purpose with upgraded equipment on it. I will say, too, that we could go through the process of asking for decommissioned or surplus military equipment, but I think there are probably a couple of reasons we don't do that. One certainly is the cost to kind of retrofit, and the condition that we get that equipment in is that we're going to have to upgrade, you know, equipment on there with new technologies and tires, and so there's probably a cost component of that. But more specifically, it's because it's designed for military purposes, and it's not designed for police purposes, which this vehicle is. So, as was pointed out, too, by Lieutenant Ratonia, I mean, this, last year, this vehicle was utilized almost a hundred and fifty times, seventy-five percent of the time, or three-quarters of the time that it went in the field, it was, it wasn't shot at necessarily three-quarters of the time, but it, the three-quarters of those responses were to events that had weapons involved by the other parties. And as has been pointed out by a couple of examples, again, that Lieutenant Ratonia used, was actually used to de-escalate the situation rather than escalate the situation. And I think those are important parts to, or components to consider when looking at this. And then again, as Lieutenant Deputy Chief Gray pointed out, this is, this is not an additional expense, because the police recruit class for 2022 was pushed into January of 23, it made some of those funds available, and because of the lead time on this being about twelve months, it makes sense to take that, those, or the monies that were appropriated for this in 23, but use it in lieu of that class. Again, I won't say it's cost neutral, I'm sure there's a difference in the pricing, but that was what allowed us to do this. And again, to Mr. Hayden's point, as well as others, we, this does not take away from our co-responders program. We have continually built up that program over the years. We will continue to do so with each budget that goes by. Mental health is certainly a huge, a huge component, and what we ask our men and women in blue to deal with every day when they're meeting the general public in all types of situations. So we will continue to grow those programs, but we must maintain also the ability for, and provide our men and women in blue the necessary equipment so that they can protect and serve our public.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Chief Gray and Lieutenant Ratonia, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I appreciated the presentation both you gave this morning and pre-council, and having that picture and articulating, here's what it looks like, here's a visual of it. We talked this morning about a call you had at, was it a Motel Six recently? If you can, please explain to the public the use of that vehicle and what that call entailed and the results, end of that call would happen.
Certainly. So officers had chased a stolen vehicle and they lost it, and when they spotted that stolen vehicle again at approximately four o'clock in the morning, they located it inside that one hundred and nineteen J Street, the Motel Six there. They reviewed video, and the last thing they saw with this known violent offender was him dragging his girlfriend by the hair while they're, while she was holding her two-month-old baby into the hotel room. So immediately, based on his history, he had shot at her a month prior, he had punched her, physically assaulted her a week prior, and then we have this instance. So our uptake as to how badly this could have turned out was, we were pretty quick to recognize, we've got to rescue them. The way the hotel was set up, they were on a second floor, and so what we would have generally used our Bearcat for is on the exterior, we would have put someone up in the terrace, they could cover that window from the outside while our team worked from the inside, because we want to be able to cover both sides. Now, ultimately, the FBI, they did bring their truck out, we were using it in that capacity. What we needed was a very specialized piece of equipment called the Rook, and that Pot County has that. It's basically an up-armored Bobcat, it's got a little bunker, and we can lift it up so we can get close to that window, and we can elevate our personnel. Our intention was to get, because we were trying to make phone calls in there, trying to establish some communication. And to your point, Councilmember Harding, our, I also command our crisis negotiation team falls under my umbrella, as well as our mental health unit, we've integrated them in. So we've got them there on scene trying to make contact, we're unsuccessful. Ultimately, what we were, our plan was, was to get a throw phone from the negotiator so we could get some audio and visual into the room. When we took that window out from that Rook, saw the female was standing there with the infant, and she was separated from the suspect, the team on the inside breached that door, rescued her, and then we just worked it like a normal barricade. And we were able to then, with a little bit of chemical munition, were able to get the suspect out. He was unharmed, we took him into custody, and it turned out very well. But specifically those types of instances where we need to have ballistic protection to work from. If we're just out in the open, it limits our options as to how we can affect the situation.
And there were no shots fired in that call-
Zero shots fired.
-for Lieutenant, okay? And the vehicle you used, I know we touched on that earlier, we covered a lot of ground, but again, that was borrowed from Potawatomi's Sheriff's or Potawatomi County-
Yes, sir.
-and Council House, correct?
Yes.
And that's because there was maintenance issues with the current city vehicle?
It was down.
Okay. And that's one of one hundred and thirty-seven calls of the like that you, that took place last year, that one with recently, correct? Okay, so this vehicle, it doesn't sit in a garage not being used. Your officers and your team use it to protect the lives of the officers that are on it and the public in the incidents you shared that happened at the motel recently.
Absolutely. We, it's not a daily-use vehicle, so it's not like they are out driving around on a patrol, but like- driving around on a patrol. But like, say for CWS, we have it down there in the event there should be a, some sort of mass incident so that we've got protection and so we can rescue citizens as well as protect our officers.
And I know, being on the Public Safety Committee, Chief Schmader has talked to us about the recruiting numbers that are being faced, not only by the Omaha Police Department, but law enforcement in the state, the Midwest, and for, for that matter, the country. So, I'm assuming the men and women, the police department, when you recruit, public safety is number one. And this is certainly a safety issue for the officers that you have the tools that the council and the mayor discuss in these meetings. And I got emails from constituents asking kind of what we covered. I won't go over everything we covered already. But the important thing is, I believe, that it's public safety to protect the officers and you give instances. We can sit here all day and go down those 137 calls that were done last year, that it's a, it's a tool in the toolbox and it's a, it's a tremendous one. And the goal is de-escalation, not to go in with force like you're in a war zone, but to have a presence and also to be able to not shoot, not have shots fired and protecting the public. Is that fair to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilman, if I may.
Just to your point, it's used a lot. I think that's kind of what you're trying to get to. We use it on a regular basis. So, it's, it's not collecting dust in a garage somewhere. We use it a lot, not only for tactical operations, but as you can see in this picture, community events. I can tell you, because I oversee both of them, everybody wants the horses and everybody wants MERV at their community event. And we can't always do MERV because it requires a driver, usually somebody from the SWAT team and some overtime involved and things like that. But, I mean, we've used it as recently as the Pace Championship. We had it at, at that event. So, that fairly recently. So, I know they get requests. I think Jake said they've had 14 requests so far this year for a different SWAT and bomb vehicle. So, we, kids like to crawl around in it and explore it and check it out. So, I mean, it's a, it's a useful community relations tool for us, too.
Absolutely. And the picture we're looking at in front of us illustrates that. And the last thing, comment I'll make that we kind of covered on before, and we talked about a pre-council chief, was the mental health correspondents. In no way is the staffing of that position that the Omaha Police Department has invested in going to be impacted by this. In other words, somebody emails and says, don't spend 300 and some thousand dollars on this. Spend it on mental health correspondents. And I think we all agree, in the last few years, that's become a, a high priority for the Omaha Police Department. So, can you tell us here today, chief, that in no way will this impact the mental health correspondents that the City of Omaha Police Department has right now?
Yeah, that's correct. This does not impact the budget for that program whatsoever. That is an extremely important program to our department, to the city, to our officers. I mean, they've gone from when it first started being a little bit reluctant about having some civilian mental health practitioner with them, to now they beg for them to come to calls and, and help them because they, they truly are effective at de-escalating situations. They do a lot of work with just setting up kind of some treatment plans long-term with individuals that, mainly just non-violent individuals that like to call 911 a lot and use up a lot of resources. So, they do a lot of that kind of thing where they just divert people to other resources rather than using up 911 and police and fires time. But no, it does not, there's no impact on their budget.
Okay. I appreciate both of you. You can sit down. I appreciate that. For the reasons that we talked about here today and the reasons that I support the Omaha Fire Department that was mentioned, I believe by Councilmember Melton earlier, or Harding, I'm sorry, it's important that we give the tools to keep the men and women, the Omaha Fire Department and Omaha Police Department safe. And this certainly is one of those tools and I'll be supporting that today. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I won't repeat, I concur with Councilman Begley and Councilman Harding on everything that they said. And I think that that's what the public needs, needs to be reminded of. And I have to, I have to remind, I know, Mr. Hayden, I appreciate the fact that, that you came here and spoke. But I also need to let you know that I don't base my decisions based on misinformation that goes out to the public and the, the people that believe in. This, we aren't adding or militarizing our police because the police actually already have this vehicle. We're just replacing it because the vehicle is so old. It's a 2006. It just isn't going to run anymore. And we're replacing it with just a 2022, 23 version. If we didn't do this, we actually would be taking a vehicle away. And what would that say to the SWAT team? Hi SWAT team, I mean, you work so hard. You go to all of the most dangerous calls. And by the way, we're going to take away the vehicle that you go in. Every major city in the United States has at least one SWAT vehicle, if not more than one. They have more than one SWAT team. And more, and so, I mean, this isn't something that new to us. I mean, but we would literally probably be one of the only city, top 50 cities without one. And what we would be doing if we didn't replace this, ours currently is at a point where it's not going to be usable anymore. And I think what we would be saying to not just the SWAT, but to our police force, we don't really care. We don't care if you're protected. And in fact, we're going, we're basically, it'd be a way of almost defunding you, right? Just take away the things that you need. It also would hurt the recruitment. Our recruitment's already down. I understand that, you know, that it's that perception problem that maybe people are scared to maybe be a police officer. But if we're not providing police officers with the tools that they need, it's going to be really hard to encourage. It'd be hard for me to encourage, I only have sons. If I had a daughter, I'd encourage. But encourage my sons to become police officers if I didn't think that they were going to be provided with the tools that they needed, such as this to keep them safe when they're responding, to protect me and protect others in our community. And so, that in addition to all the other reasons, I fully support this. The cost, I think, is in line with what it would cost for this type of vehicle. And it is kind of a unique purchase. So, it's not something that we can bid out to any one of our, our fine auto dealers that we have here that some, sometimes we can do with other city vehicles. It is extremely specialized and we want to make sure that we are getting what we're paying for. So, a, a unique bid on this is not unusual. And with that, I completely support it and I will move to approve this item.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Deputy Chief Gray, thank you so much for providing the information that was asked of you and your department during pre-council in terms of better educating the public regarding this proposed item on our agenda today. But as City Council Rep for District 2, I've been tasked with asking some more difficult questions. So, I would ask that you bear with me as I ask these questions to get more clarity for the community. This type of vehicle will be, will this type of vehicle only be used in North and South Omaha? And if so, how often will this vehicle also be used in West Omaha?
It's used all over the city, the county, other counties. We have mutual aid agreements with all the surrounding cities. So, we've, just a few months ago, we basically did all SWAT operations for Bellevue while they were training up a, a new team there. So, we use it in every corner of the, the county, really.
Okay. So, I think the maker of this question, what they're alluding to is they're wanting to see some comfort in knowing that there won't be any misuse being done using the vehicle in underserved communities. And given the fact that there is some tension regarding police relations in, in those communities, the maker is concerned that it will be primarily used in underserved communities versus communities that are not faced with challenges of poverty.
Well, I'd just say that, you know, crime's not localized just to North and South Omaha. It's citywide. So, we're going to go wherever the incident is, wherever the, the facts of a particular incident and, and need take us.
So, can we go a little bit further by, maybe after a year or so, can we get some statistics that will report out how often this vehicle is being used throughout Omaha? That way we can kind of put out those kinds of conversations that we have in the community far too often.
Yeah, I believe Lieutenant Retonia provided kind of the annual breakdown of, of how often it's used.
But the, the breakdown that he provided, not that I'm challenging his information, doesn't really speak to the question of the concern, the perception piece, that the vehicle may be misused in areas of poverty versus areas where there is no, you know, where there is no concern about money. I'm, I'm being frank here.
Well, I would just say that we've been using it since 2006 and that's never been brought up. So, I-
So, I guess what I'm saying is, I know you don't have this information today.
Sure.
So, I'm saying that since this is being, in my opinion, it's the first time it's been asked by the public, I'm asking that after today, if we could get some more data to kind of not only say that we use this, doing 150 deploys in the 2021 year, that we be a little bit more intentional and specific about where those locations of when those deploys take out.
Well, we can certainly provide you data, but we don't have much control over where some of these events occur. We go where the incident occurs.
Okay. So, the next question. Lancaster County Sheriff's Office bought their Lincoln, Lenco Bearcat with forfeited assets and not taxpayers' dollars. Could we do that?
I suppose it's probably an, an option.
And the, and this piggybacks to the next question because if that money was not used from the police budget and, and used in the manner that Lancaster did, then that would free up more money in your budget to do other things such as educational or community-driven things to curb crime.
Well, let me take that, take that back. And I, I don't know if Ryan or somebody from legal can answer it. Because I think now that this is in the budget for next year, we can't use seized assets money for that. Because typically, you can't use seized assets money for budgeted items.
Okay. So, for budgetary purposes, because it already has been spoken or outlined in our budget, but I think they're just asking the question from a hypothetical perspective that if, in the future, can we start looking at alternative ways of spending money from, from seized money to help your department out when we need these kinds of purchases?
Yeah, absolutely.
And that way it would free up opportunities for that same money that would be earmarked in this case to things like education and things, and other things that would be more community-driven to reduce crime in the community.
Sure. We can absolutely look at, at that. I'll, I'll just caution that the thing about, it's, it's now referred to as equitable sharing. Equitable sharing balances are very fluid. We, sometimes if, when you see, say you get a drug dealer with a big sum of cash, we may not see that for years. And we only get a portion of that. So, there's a long process for that forfeiture to take place. And we don't know when we're going to get it. So, our balance in that fund fluctuates.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good. All right. No further lights. There is a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Plermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Begley.
Right.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 42 is approved, seven to zero. Item 43, in ordinance to acquire private property for the flood wall repairs and coating system rehabilitation at flood control pump station, or project.
Public hearing on number 43 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Item 44, in ordinance to approve a crosswalk maintenance agreement for the crossroad site northwest of 72nd and Dodge Streets.
Public hearing on number 44 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearings closed. I'll just add to this item. What this does is it allows a number of decorative crosswalks internal to the cross, crossroads development site that is underway now and requires the developer to maintain them, which I think is positive. I would just also encourage us to look at the intersections external to the site that could benefit from additional attention as well. 72nd Cass, 72nd Dodge, and 74th and Dodge that are presumably crossways to a library and across some really busy streets that I think could benefit from similar analysis. Next item, please.
Item 45, in ordinance to approve a contract with Omaha Public Schools for school resource officers at various schools as listed on the agenda.
Public hearing on number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Item 46, in ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement for the Metropolitan Drug Task Force for a term of five years.
Public hearing on number 46 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Item 46, in ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement for the Metropolitan Drug Task Force for a term of five years.
Public hearing on number 46 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Item 47, in ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Article 4, Division 1 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled bidding procedures to establish procedures for electronic bidding system.
Public hearing on number 47 is today. Proponents, please.
I waited a long time to say this. Jared Anderson, City of Omaha Human Rights and Relations, we in support of this agenda item.
You're not just talking about today, you're talking about years, right? Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearings closed. Mr. Plermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if I had somebody to hug, I guess it would be you because you came down here. We, we both, we all have been talking about this as a council in different city departments, in the clerk's office, in law, about how this is necessary for big companies and small companies for the City of Omaha to save money. And when people in the public ask us for help on items and we tell them the process and they're like, gosh, that's just too long. That doesn't make sense. Well, I wish I had a magic wand because I wouldn't have had to ask for this for years. But I didn't let up. It makes sense. It truly does save the City of, City of Omaha money. And if that's our end goal, then this won't be perfect because nothing is. But it'll certainly help with that bid that we're looking for as we know we receive less and less of them to benefit the city and maybe taking that lower bid. So, I may have more to say next week. We've been here a while now. But I would assume we would all be in agreement that this might be a seven oh vote. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And because I believe that's true and it could likely be on consent agenda, I will just ask you a couple of questions today. I obviously support this as well. I know Councilmember Plermo's been championing this for, for a long time. But I just wanted to have a couple of clarifications on the record.
Jared Anderson, Omaha Human Rights and Relations Department.
Great. Thank you. We've all had briefings on this. But just a couple of things for those that might be interested in this, who would be, pretty much anybody who wants to do business with the city, right?
Correct.
Is that, should this be approved next week? This would apply to any bids that are $20,000 and over, right?
Correct.
Now, there is an issue on the ballot right now that should voters approve an increase in that amount up to 50, we would have to come back and probably amend this to be 50,000 and over. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, if, if both those things occur- we would have to come back and probably amend this to be 50,000 and over, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then if both those things occur, what can bidders expect in terms of a transition or the timing of this if this is approved next week?
I might actually suggest somebody from Public Works is more qualified to answer that question for me. Purchasing, Eric Carlson.
Assistant City Attorney, I can answer that question as well. Should this be approved? This would change the Omaha Municipal Code to allow the city to implement an electronic bidding platform and accept bids electronically. Once those ordinances are changed to allow that, the purchasing agent would then designate a platform and that platform would be implemented through the Douglas Omaha Technology Commissioner dot com. I believe that the Purchasing Department and Eric Carlson may be able to shed more light on this. Anticipates beginning the electronic transit bidding platform transition process around the first of the year. And he can perhaps shed more light on that.
Go ahead.
Eric Carlson, City of Omaha, purchasing. And yeah, thank you for that, Ryan, and you as well, Jared. Yeah, we're all very excited about this opportunity and looking forward to hopefully getting this approved next week. We will work diligently once we do have the approval and can procure the platform in terms of setting up the actual plan for implementation, training, communication, everything. And we're certainly working through Human Rights and Relations, the Chamber of Commerce Commerce and the REACH Program. We're going to do everything we can to make sure that people know well in advance that this is happening so that we've got a smooth transition. You're right, Councilman Palermo, obviously nothing's perfect, but I think this is certainly going to give us, give us the right direction of providing that consistency, transparency, and improve the process for you guys in terms of the bids and totally minimize the number of appeals and things that come before you, you know, based on missing documents and things like that, and that's our goal.
So you're hopeful that would be in place by January 1st?
Well, we're going to start working towards implementing the planning after the first of the year. There's going to be a transitionary period of at least three months where we'll allow bids to be submitted like they are now because we want to make sure folks have an opportunity to get registered, understand the platform, and before we actually make it 100% online.
Yeah, and that's what I want people to know is that there will be a transition time as you're making sure everyone understands how to do this correctly and until we shift to entirely electronic, right?
Yeah, we want to make sure we allow plenty of time before we pull the plug, so to speak, on the current process.
Yeah, and you mentioned you've talked with the Chamber and the REACH Program and obviously the SEB program is now run out of HR and R, so you'll give us some attention to those contractors too to make sure they're up to speed and aware of this change too, right?
Yeah, absolutely, and if it mentions that in the ordinance, we're actually going to have a workstation in our office, like I mentioned to you folks when we met with you earlier, that we'll have a place for folks to come and get registered on the platform so that we can make sure there's no obstacles to them participating in an online bidding process.
Great, thank you. I look forward to supporting this next week too. No further lights, next item.
Item 48, Erickson Construction Appeals Rejection of Their Bid From September 14th, 2022 For OPW 53979 Papio WRF Belt Filter Press Expansion.
This is a bid rejection appeal. We'll first hear from the appellant if you want to state your name and address and reason for your appeal.
Todd Beatty, Erickson Construction, 7419 North 116th Avenue Circle.
I'm Jenny Erickson with Erickson Construction, address 13429 Spring Ridge Loop in Blair, Nebraska, 68008. We bid the Papio Belt Filter Press Project, submitted a bid of $2,884,000 and were the little bidder on that project. We were then notified that that was rejected because of an administrative error. Do you want me to kind of go through the whole details of everything that we have?
Yeah, maybe a summary of your appeal and we'll see if you have questions, yeah.
So I submitted an appeal. I don't know if everybody has a copy of that that was submitted to the clerk. With that, on attachment A, the participant disclosure form, it asked for the identified scope. So the way we always do that is we wrote the scope of work that the ESB, the Emerging Small Business, was going to be doing, and that is demolition. We were notified that we were rejected because that scope did not state the specific code that they are registered under and that demolition is not a registered code. There are two different things that emerging small businesses can register under, the NAICS code and also the City of Omaha Product and Services Classification. So the ESB that we had listed on this document is Kester Construction and they are registered with the City of Omaha under item classification 59, which is a contractor of Public Works. So that is the code that they are registered under. The actual scope of work they are doing in a Public Works building is demolition. So we are appealing this on the fact of the form itself did not ask for the code or the classification. The form asked for the scope of work being performed and so that's what we listed. We also sent notice to the City of Omaha asking that this form be amended because if the city is going to hold accountable wanting a code or a classification, that that should be asked for instead of asking for the code or the scope of work. I know the next lowest bidder was Building Crafts.
Correct.
And they submitted a bid for $2,995,000, so it's an additional $110,000 the city's going to be incurring over a clerical error like this that we feel the form is not asking for the proper things. Anything you have to add to that? Any questions, we'd definitely be welcome to answer them.
Thank you, I think we'll have some, but first of all, hear from the city. Ms. Tippi Pierce?
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works. So as per our procurement processes and our understanding of the HR and R departments, policies, and procedures, all of our SEB reserves are vetted for, or all of our bids that we solicit are vetted for potential SEB participation. So there was an SEB reserve of half percent and we set it that way to leave discretion to the general contractor as to which SEBs they would like to utilize for this project. On the backend, then, we have to review all of our bids to make sure that the vendors identified are actually registered with the Small and Emerging Small Business Program. We have always been instructed that those registrations, per the ordinance, are based upon the scopes of work as concur with the NAICS or the NAICS Code System. That's a federal, actually, an international system, replaced the old SIC codes, if you guys remember those, that are standardized across all of North America. So the US Small Business Administration chose to use that in determining what is a small business. Our ordinances then scale that down even further, so we kind of have to follow the same pattern that the federal government utilizes. So all of our determinations as to whether or not a vendor to us is registered as smaller or emerging small business is based on does the scope identified match the NAICS Code that that company is actually certified as a vendor? So, and HR and R does those determinations. So we look at HR and R's list, we encourage all of our contractors to look at HR and R's list. I believe that the Purchasing Department maintains their own bid lists for their internal purposes, for notification purposes and processing purposes. However, we have always been instructed as Public Works Department to follow the ordinances and to look at whether or not a firm is certified as an SEB based on the determinations made by HR and R and the NAICS Codes. So when we look at the scope identified on that form, we have to work with HR and R to make sure that that scope is a scope that matches the work that's done under the NAICS Code that that company is authorized under. In this case, I worked with Christian Espinoza from the HR and R Department and we looked at Erickson's bid and I'm going to pull up some illustrative examples because this is, it was a little bit complicated for me to learn when we implemented this program in 2010. I've kind of gotten pretty good at it over the course of, you know, quite a few years, but... So the NAICS Code that Kester is, Kester Construction is registered as an SEB under is industrial building construction. And so we looked at demolition work and nothing in this definition calls for demolition work to be an allow... Yeah, yeah, there we go, okay. Nothing in this description allows for demolition to be considered under that classification. So we, we also have learned from clarifications from the Law Department that the ordinance requires that the firm be identified, so we also looked at the entirety of the scope of the work for the project to see if there was any other work in that project that could be considered under this NAICS Code. Unfortunately, in this case, the only code that Kester is certified with the program as an SEB under specifically exempts work at sewage treatment plants, which is what this project is. So they would have had to have been also registered under a different NAICS Code in order for us to qualify them as an SEB to fulfill the SEB requirement. And that is something that is done by the HR and R Department as a firm is getting registered or re-registered with that program. So it wasn't a judgment call as to whether or not the firm was certified or not. The firm is certified, but only for this particular work, which accepts work at sewage treatment plants. So they would have had to also, to qualify for demolition, they would have also had to be registered under... I'll move this up a little bit, so it's going to be a little bit blurry. Based on the advice that we were given from HR and R, they would have also had to have been registered under... This is kind of hard. There we go. So this is the NAICS definition for site preparation contractors. So based on just general demolition work, this is the code that HR and R told us they would have also had to have been registered under in order to qualify to fulfill that half percent requirement. Yep. There you go. So if Kester had also been doing this as a scope of work, they should have also been registered under the NAICS Code. They weren't. So it's unfortunately not one of those situations that's as cut and dried as you forgot a form. This was, this was a situation where we had to work very closely with HR and R Department to verify, you know, does this qualify, does it not? And we were informed that based on not just the scope of work that was identified, but any scope of work for the project, Kester would not be qualified as an SEB.
Okay, all right. I see you might want to say something. I'm sure somebody will, I'm going to have you wait for a minute though. We'll see if councilmembers have questions and I'll recognize you if somebody doesn't. Ms. Melton?
Thank you. Well, and I guess, I just want to make a couple of statements because initially, my thoughts were if Kester Construction is listed as an SEB, I was having concerns that they were denied. But now I understand, you got further into it, they're an SEB under a completely different category and it accepts sewer treatment, is that correct, Ms. Pierce? If you want to...
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works. So yeah, we, we look at, we look at two things.
No, I just said yes or no. It was accepted, you can't, it's an SEB, but the SEB they registered actually says they can't do sewer treatment, right?
They cannot do construction in sewage treatment plant.
And then the one they needed to be that included demolition, they weren't registered as, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, that's, thank you. You guys could, if you could step up. So I mean, initially, I was very concerned. I thought, well, you know, if they're on there, I agree. I read your letter, which I thought was very compelling, I understand that. But I do understand that for purposes of the SEB, we have to follow our ordinances and our ordinances say they have to be an SEB qualified under the SEB program for what they're doing. So as much as I, I just want to let you know, as much as I really wanted to support you in this bid rejection, what I think is it's an unfortunate mistake that the next time you bid, that you have to make sure that the SEB go to their qualifications and make sure they're registered that way.
I think they're registered, and I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, they're registered two ways and that's what I put on there. They're both under the City of Omaha Products and Services Classification and the NAICS Codes. And if you look at the form, and I put this in there under the exhibit, I'll stick it on there, this form does not state whether we were to follow the NAICS or whether we were to follow the City of Omaha Products and Services Classifications. And I put that in the appeal that we sent, that if you look under the City of Omaha Products and Services Classifications of the SEB registrations, they are registered as a Public Works, what's the exact?
Contractor of Public Works.
Contractor of Public Works. This construction is being done in a Public Works facility and what they are doing is some of the demolition work inside of it. So if this form would have stated that you have to follow the NAICS Code, then we would have done that. The form does not state whether you're supposed to be using the NAICS Code or the City of Omaha Project, Product and Services Classifications that these SEB companies are both registered under. So if it were to say one or the other, I could see how we could be held accountable to the NAICS Codes, but those are not designated as being required on this Exhibit A, the City of Omaha Small and Emerging Business Program document that was supposed to be filled out.
Okay, so you just put them down based upon the fact that they were listed as a Public Works?
Yeah, we were following the City of Omaha Product and Services Classifications. If you go to the City of Omaha's website, under the Emerging Small Businesses, you go to Product and Services Classifications, they're registered as contractor under item number 59, which is a contractor of Public Works Construction.
And I think that that was not clarified. So somebody from the city want to come up, I'm not sure, to, somebody want to address that? Since it wasn't specifically listed that it had to be that... NCIS, but I think there's more letters.
No, that's okay, the NAICS Codes is how we call it.
NAICS Codes, okay.
Yeah, Christian Espinoza, Human Rights and Relations. The bottom line here is the SEB ordinance. You cannot be an SEB based on the purchasing codes. You have to be an SEB based on the NAICS Codes.
But where does it say that? Then why do you list, why do you list two different things on the website?
We give it this because it's just how the Purchasing Department advertised the projects. It's not part of the city, it's just how Purchasing Department does it. What we do, in order to qualify an SEB, I look at the NAICS Codes. Look at the gross receipts and if they qualify for the specific NAICS Code that they are submitting, then I approve or I deny.
Okay, so how are the bidders supposed to know that?
Of the various... It is common knowledge that everybody in the construction world uses NAICS Codes. If you're going to do a water treatment plant, you need to, you have to look at the NAICS Codes to do that. Every time that you register for a federal project, a state project, everything is NAICS Codes. Nobody uses the purchasing codes in the construction world.
But why doesn't it, why doesn't it say that instead? Because you're saying purchasing then doesn't put NAICS Codes in there, it's just supposed to be common knowledge?
The Purchasing Department uses those internally to advertise the projects. They don't use it to determine if there is an SEB or not.
Right, but they say just a public work, I mean, what they're saying is, what purchasing puts out is it just has to be a Public Works contractor?
For advertising. Everybody could put that code to advertise a project, so they send the postcards based on those codes. But that doesn't have to do anything with the construction itself.
How are the bidders supposed to know that?
In general, construction bidders know that we, everybody goes to the NAICS Codes. And SEBs knows, because I sit down with them, we go through the process and I tell them, you are certified under this NAICS Code. You are not certified under the NAICS Code, so you cannot perform anything else that is not on your NAICS Code.
So what you're saying is Kester Construction should have known they weren't qualified as an SEB?
Of course.
Okay, so, all right, so that's where Kester should have known they weren't qualified to do demo at a sewer treatment plant? Because they're not certified.
Right, because I sit down with them, I go through the process, I tell them exactly what they qualify. I tell them if they are emerging business or they are a small business.
All right.
So they should know exactly whether they are qualified or not.
Okay.
And they are always welcome to add an NAICS Code at the moment of recertification part.
Thank you. Ryan, can you help clarify any of the questions that I have answered?
Ryan Weason, Assistant City Attorney. I'll only add that under the Omaha Municipal Code, the SEB program has definitions in it and those definitions specify that it is under the NAICS Codes. So those are set forth... So those are set forth in the Omaha Municipal Code. While the NICS term may not be used in that specific form, that form does reference the Small and Emerging Small Business Program several times and the SEB program several times. Additionally, to the extent that there are discrepancies or questions or certain things in specifications are not clear, there's always a process for potential vendors to submit questions to the purchasing department and have those questions answered through an addendum. So if a potential vendor like Erickson Construction is looking at a bid specification document and says, hey, this might not be clear, do I submit under this code or this code? They can submit a question through the purchasing process. All of those questions will be evaluated, those questions and the answers to those questions will then be publicly posted as an addendum available to everyone, and they could have utilized that process if they weren't clear on something as well.
Could you call and say, is Kessler Construction a qualified SEB for demolition?
I suppose you could call the Human Rights and Relations Department and ask that question, Mr. Espinoza, or somebody else would give an answer to that.
Okay, you have to state, state your name again.
Yeah, so basically they didn't apply for demolition, so they are no an SEB authorized, oh, sorry. Human Rights and Relations, Christian Espinoza.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, the question was, could somebody call you and say, is this person on the list for this travel, for this line of work?
Yeah, they can call me anytime. I can let them know.
All right, thank you.
And we have a, a search, a...
I understand, and if you get Public Works, Public Works is a firm to you, but I, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So, I, I have, I have no further questions, so go ahead.
Can I say one more thing? Or, sorry.
Floor is yours, Ms. Milton.
Okay. I guess, the one, this is Jenny Erickson again. One thing we'd like to say is, in the plans, the specifications that came out with this project to bid, nowhere in those documents did it say the NAICS codes. We did not ask any questions because we've always used this form, we write the identified scope, we've always referenced the City of Omaha Products and Services Classification. So the common knowledge thing, I guess, we do a lot of work with the City of Omaha, we've been around for 40 years doing this, we've always referenced the City of Omaha Products and Services Classification. So I wouldn't say that's general knowledge to contractors, 'cause we've always gone with the scope of work, not the classification or the code. And nowhere on here does it say, on this document in particular, that we had to fill out, nowhere does it say we needed to reference the NAICS versus the City of Omaha code.
I agree. What I'm having, what gives me the... Most heartburn, is that I don't think this was your fault, or that you had any knowledge, but when you have a, when you do your sub, when you have, your, Kessler should have told you, I'm, I'm not, I can't be counted as an SEB.
Well, and he can, he referenced it as being a contractor of public works construction as well. So I don't know if that's something, I mean, we work, go out of our way to make sure we get these ESPs in there. They are ref, he is referencing the City of Omaha Products and Services Classification. Now, do I know if he's right or wrong? And I don't know what the difference is between the two, what the city uses for one versus the other, but on this document here itself, it does not say that we were to follow the NAICS, it didn't say which of the two codes, and he does fall under the City of Omaha's website, and I printed that out and attached it, as being a contractor of public works construction, so...
So unfortunately, our ordinances spell it out, and that's what I'm having problems with, and I, I get it, you...
And that's where we have the problem.
When you're filling this out, you're not going back and reading the City of Omaha ordinances, I understand.
We go to the website, our, our admin goes to the website and makes sure they're registered. We always go to the City of Omaha Products and Services Classification. She makes sure that we are covered and we have the right people in the right product, the right spots. We haven't referenced the NAICS ones in the past, so that has never been a problem in anything we've done, and like I said here, it doesn't say on the form which ones we're supposed to be going with.
I, I mean, I guess, what I would say, moving forward, always make sure that your sub, your sub should be able to tell you though, what they're registered as. I mean, it should be as simple as that.
Well, and that's where he went, he said he was registered as the City of Omaha, the public works contractor. So I don't know why we have two separate codes. If the city wants one followed, that's a conversation for a whole nother day, but that's where he came to us.
And I don't know what the products and services are, why would we, I don't know why we would ever use that one.
That's in the attachment I sent. If you go, you look at the code that these ESPs are registered on, under through the City of Omaha. So that's a whole separate thing that they're under through this ESP program.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield the floor, I may have more questions about that, but Councilmember Palerma may address those. If he doesn't, I'll turn my light back on.
Mr. Palerma, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just when I believe, I, I understand, I look through the 42 pages of documents and I find myself confused, so I may not answer your questions, but I do have some. Now for you first though, ma'am, you can have a seat. HR and R, who would have liked to come up? Jared, take away that hug and, tough questions.
Christian Espinoza, Human Rights and Relations.
Okay, so I'm, I'm following along, and we could pull somebody out of the crowd and make them an SEB. And, and there's two different codes you can apply to be an SEB. Let me take that back, I'll let you answer that. So, an SEB comes to you as a qualified SEB that we know the City of Omaha is lacking across the board, and they say, I can do anything. I can do anything in construction. Here's the equipment I have. What codes would you recommend that I put down? What do you tell them?
I would not recommend myself any codes. I would say just make sure that you are covered enough to do all the work that you do. For example, if somebody does concrete, they can do sub-preparation at the same time, because they have a, a slow skiller or any other equipment, that they can do both. So it's like, I will post all the codes and say, like, this is the examples that you can do, is the type of work that you will do, you choose your codes. There are some codes, for example, electricians, there is no way around. You have to have your license and you have to have your NICS code. There is no, I can do and I cannot do that, because we have specific certifications for that, right? Plumbing is another example for that. So that's the reason we use the NICS codes, because we need certifications. We cannot go all the other places. There are some people that might, might say, like, I do landscaping, like, okay, fine, you can do it, you have the equipment, and I can look at your taxes, then you can get certificate, it's, it's up to them. I would not recommend myself to put codes here and there, because I need to make sure that they give you the information.
Well, let's use the first example that you mentioned, which was concrete, and I would venture to say that if an SEB came to you and said, we can do concrete, that'd mean they have a dump truck, probably a skid loader.
Right.
Possibly, hopefully, some employees, which means they can do more than concrete for city bidding. They could probably do most of your landscaping. If I'm quickly looking through here, they could probably do retaining walls, and I say probably, 'cause the people that I know can do concrete.
Right, they usually go together.
It's a little advanced, more than some of this. They certainly will qualify for rock, sand and gravel. I mean, I can keep going down this list and tell you how you should be looking at them, and I don't wanna tell you how to do your job, 'cause you know it better than I, but we both know the problems. If you have an SEB that is a concrete person, then they should have a, I should be able to go like this with all these papers of different things they're qualified for.
And I sit down with them in the computer and I show all the specifications, all the other works that are related to what they are doing, what they are coming with me. But it's up to them to tell me which NICS code they want to put, I cannot force them to do that. So if somebody does concrete, I can say, like, you can, you can do a side preparation, here is the, the description of that. So I sit down with them, I go through the descriptions with them. I'm not letting them just themselves, I always walk with them to the process.
So, there's many different codes that they qualify for. Is this, Kest, is, Kestor is an SEB?
Correct, for this particular code. Just for this code, not for another one.
That's the only code they're qualified for through us as an SEB?
Yeah, just 236210, that's the only one that they qualify for. When they put it together, I mean...
They're a demolition company and you're telling me we only have them for one code?
They just, the industrial building construction is the only NICS code that they put for their SEB registration, that's it. They didn't put another one.
I think I found the problem. They'd open up the codes for these contractors. If you're, if you're doing demolition, that's even a step above what hauling or, I mean, all this stuff. I look at all these codes that are included from Erickson, the 42 pages.
They could have listed whatever they wanted with me, so they can be approved, but they just chose to use one. And it was the industrial building construction.
Let me ask you this a different way. I'm a contractor, again, we'll use concrete, 'cause you brought that up, and that's an easy one, right?
Right.
And I wanna do work for the city. What floor do I go to and what's the process to flip through this book or chart of codes to be notified, already knowing I'm an SEB, of, and, and, and why wouldn't I just put them all down?
You can put as many as you can, and I will make sure that you qualify for all of them.
Well, if you didn't, you just wouldn't bid it. If you're a concrete person, and...
If you're a concrete person, you can use 237311, that is the most common one, for the NICS code. That's what almost all the concrete people use it.
No, if I'm a concrete person and I look at 126, which is construction...
But there's a purchasing department, and we don't use a purchasing department based on the ordinance.
No, 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 I know. Follow me where I'm going here.
Okay.
And I'm a concrete person, and I see 126, Construction Management Services, I'm gonna pick it. And if, what happens is, you send cards out when the bids come about, and if you can't bid what's on the card, then you don't bid it. So that's how the city does it for contractors. Why would the SEB program be any different with the different set of codes they have?
We use the federal requirements based on the SBA, and that's what is put in the ordinance. What the purchasing department does for advertising is their own codes. Now, what I do with the Small Business Program, when they are putting their, their purchasing codes, I say just make sure that your NICS codes match what you're putting in your purchasing codes, 'cause you're gonna get a postcard, and you may have to make sure that you can perform what you're putting there to be advertised.
Yeah, 'cause I would say what Heather Tippi Pierce showed us earlier, when she blocked off what this company qualified for, even though you, you may have them in the select code of demolition, unless you do that work, no normal person up here is going to, and I don't know if law could back it up by saying you don't qualify for this, well, how, how could you not? It's not specific enough to say you don't qualify.
Well, we don't qualify them based on the scope of work, we qualify them based on their gross income. Every single NICS code have a gross income next to it, and it depends on the gross income they can qualify with one NICS code or the other.
Okay. Thanks. Ryan, perfect, 'cause you're next.
Ryan Weesing, Assistant City Attorney. I'll only add, I think there's maybe some confusion over some terms here, and there's a difference between qualified and a difference between certified. A company may be qualified to perform work under several different NICS codes, but if their application to be, become a certified SEB or a small or emerging small business participant doesn't list all the NICS codes that they're qualified under, they won't be certified under all those NICS codes. We can't go out and require somebody to submit an application, become certified under our SEB program. We're limited to certifying those NICS codes that are listed in the application. And so if this entity submitted their application to the Human Rights and Relations Department to be certified under a specific NICS code, but didn't also list a code that they would otherwise be qualified for, the Human Rights and Relations Department isn't gonna certify them under additional codes, 'cause they didn't apply for that certification. If you look at our ordinances, and I'll try and take out the page here.
Could you clarify a little more when you say certified and qualified? What would be the difference on this SEB in particular, on the differences?
That might be getting a little technical for what I'm able to answer.
Well, I'm gonna save the city $100,000 here, so get technical.
If we look at Section 10 dash 200.1, it defines definitions for a small and emerging small business program. You can see under I, North American Industry Classification, so somewhere next is a standard established by the United States Office of Management and Budget used by federal statistical agencies in classifying business establishments for the purpose of collecting, analyzing, and publishing statistical data related to the US business economy. I am not gonna pretend to be an expert under those federal regulations and NICS codes. I have not had an opportunity to review those in depth. But that's how the city council has chosen to define small and emerging small businesses. The city council has not chosen to define small and emerging small businesses under this City of Omaha Products specification code. I, I'm not familiar with that either. But as what's set out in our code definitions, that is the classification that is used for our small and emerging small businesses. If you go to Section 10 dash 200.2, subsection A, it talks about how you become certified as a small and emerging small businesses. And it says, businesses desiring to be certified as a small or an emerging small business must complete the requisite forms as provided by the Human Rights and Relations Department. So it's my understanding is how this process works, is that a company will submit an application form to become certified under a NICS code or multiple NICS codes, it's up to that business. But they have to submit that application, have those forms certified by the Human Rights and Relations Department. Then, with respect to the specific bidding requirements, and we change, go, we switch to Omaha Municipal Code, Section 10 dash 200.4, Paragraph A, and it says, documentation must be submitted at the time the bid is opened. If a bidder or any of its designated subcontractors, in this case it's a subcontractor, desires to be considered as a small or an emerging small business, the requisite forms must be completed and approved by the Human Rights and Relations Department prior to the date of bid opening on the product for which they're submitting the bid. So in this case, if the subcontractor who was maybe qualified to perform demolition work or demolition work in a sewage treatment plant, they weren't certified at the time the bid was submitted. And that onus is on the subcontractor to submit the proper forms and be certified by the Human Rights and Relations Department prior to bid opening, and in this case, that wasn't done.
Okay. So, the bid was rejected because of an error. Would, would they not be able to fix it within seven days?
Ryan Weesing, Assistant City Attorney, no, this is not a bid security issue in which there are correctable errors. It is clearly stated in Section 10 dash 200.4, Subparagraph A, that if documentation must be submitted at the time the bid is opened, there's no grace period of seven days there, it doesn't say there's a correctable error, and it says quite clearly, if a bidder or any of its designated subcontractors, in this case it's a designated subcontractor, desires to be considered as a small or an emerging small business, the requisite forms must be completed and approved by the Human Rights and Relations Department prior to the date of bid opening. It doesn't say prior to or seven days after. That language is not in the ordinance.
Okay, would you determine this to be a minor defect?
No, I would not.
Okay, well, colleagues, I would determine this to be a minor defect. Thank you, Mr. Weesing. Ma'am, if you wanna come back up, I know you had something to say. I don't have a question for you, obviously we're getting to the end.
Yes, yeah, I'll keep it short.
Pull the rabbit out of the hat thing, this is the time to do it.
Yeah, I, I would just say, I mean, I know you referenced a lot of things in the municipal code, made my head spin. When a contractor bids a job, we take the form in front of us, we read the form. This form does not say, do you follow NAICS or do you follow the other thing? Under the NAICS...
Is that the only form that you had to fill out from your SEB qualified contractor?
Yes.
Can you put that on the overhead? I wanna see what categories it gives us.
What I sent out also.
So...
Under the NAICS, he's under Industrial Construction Contractor. That would be, demolition would be considered under that. So if we would have looked at the NAICS and saw industrial construction, we would have said, that's fine, part of construction is you do demolition to go then build something. If you go under the other one, under the City of Omaha Public Works, I always forget what it's called, that one, it says City Public Works Contractor. That falls demolition under that. So from my standpoint, if I'm looking at him as an industrial construction contractor or the other, he meets the qualifications. This doesn't specify which one I'm supposed to follow. So, is it vague? Yes. Do I think it's worth pulling, whatever our bid was? He remembers the things. Pulling the bid from us for $2.8 million and the city paying $2.9 million for something where there's a lot of vagueness, and we would have had to go reference the City of Omaha Municipal Codes versus follow the form that was in front of us? No, I don't think that's accurate. We filled out the form with the information that was asked for on it. Under either one of those, from what we look at, he should be qualified. Demolition falls under Industrial Construction and Public Works Contractor.
Is this the only form your SEB had to fill out? Or you filled out?
We fill this out form and state who our SEB is, yes.
Are there any other forms that have SEB on them?
No.
Listed anywhere?
No. Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Milton?
My question is, where's this other list? This purchasing list?[1783.26]
This is him.
Sorry.
It's also listed on the city, sorry, Todd Beatty Erickson Construction. It's also listed on the city website under the SEB tab.
So, under the, in the city website, we have an SEB tab, forgive me because I'm not a contractor. Um, I'm the lawyer who also going through those ordinances, sometimes going through our ordinances makes my head spin.
So you go to Health and, Health Human Rights and Relations?
Okay, oh, thank you.
There's a tab for...
Oh, that's what that is?
Yeah.
Okay, I saw that attached to your letter, sorry, I couldn't, I didn't, it was cut off, hold on, it's coming up. So it says product and service classifications under City of, and then it lists all the businesses, is that right?
It lists all the classifications...
No, it lists classifications.
That each of these are, and this is where Kestner Construction is listed as number fifty-nine, which is City of Omaha Public Works Contractor.
I see, okay, they're listed, Public Works City Contractor on our product and service classifications on our webs, on the website. On the human rights and relations website, which our ordinance says they are the ones that have to approve.
So as a general contractor, this is where we go.
I don't think this is a minor defect, I think that we have two different lists. And in our, even in our ordinance, it says it has to be approved by Human Rights and Relations in the ordinance that Ryan just showed me. And then Human Rights and Relations literally has their own list...
On the website.
On their website. What?
It's not our list, it's purchasing department list.
It says City of Omaha Human Rights and Relations.
And it's on the SEB tab that we look at to see if these SEBs meet that.
This is where we go to verify their scopes are accurate, and this is what we've always done.
For a lot of years.
I mean, I, so, I'm not, see, I don't think that you had a minor defect or that what happened could be considered a minor defect. I think the city has produced a list that potentially may be contrary to even our ordinance, but even under our ordinance where it says, "It has to be approved by the City of Omaha Human Rights and Relations." City of Human Rights and Relations has on their website a list from purchasing that then lists other things. I, I guess, that then has them listed as a public works contractor. I think it is so vague and we're giving two different directions because I would say if I picked somebody from this list, they would be approved by the Human Rights and Relations because it's on their tab. So, that's what I would assume. So in my opinion, if they, if the city wants specifically to exclude them, then it's gonna have to be listed on the form, otherwise I think either one goes because that's what we produced. It says Human Rights and Relations, and I, I'm sorry, the, the mental legal gymnastics that I have to go through to try and get to the result that the city wants, I'm having a hard time doing. So, that, that's, I think your form better be fixed if this is what you wanna do.
And we did ask for that because the form doesn't specify which one to use.
Okay, Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I don't know that my question's relevant now, but let me ask either Ryan or Christian. So, is Kessler only certified for the, I forgot the number, twenty-two, zero, whatever the...
Uh, Christian Espinoza, Human Rights and Relations, yes.
Are they only certified for the one that, uh, Heather Tippi Pierce showed us earlier?
Yeah, for twenty-three sixty-two-ten, yes, that's the only one.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, question for Public Works. Bob, I can see, so there's obviously a lot of consternation around this. I'm not exactly sure what motion may happen here or not, but I guess I'd be interested in knowing if the, if the appeal rejection was accepted, or should we accept the appeal? And if that was done, usually what happens is the council would instruct a rebid of the project. Tell me about the project and, um, what is, what's the timeliness of this belt filter press expansion situation?
Bob Stube, Public Works, so, so it is a project that is at the Papio Plant. It's a project that we've identified as, as a needed project. We did put it out for bids, I don't believe we've, we've submitted anything to you as far as awarding to the apparent low bidder. So, it is something that I, I don't think we want to delay for a long time, but the potential is, is that you will still have to approve or we will have to submit to you for approval, um, the award to the acceptable low bidder. Which I believe is, um, probably a couple of weeks away if I'm not mistaken with regard to whether I have the, the authority or maybe Ryan's up there to address another issue that may arise.
Okay, go ahead, Ryan.
Ryan Weesing, Assistant City Attorney, the issue before the council today is solely whether to grant or deny the appeal. If the council were to grant the appeal, the rejected bid would simply be returned to the department, the Public Works Department in this case, for evaluation. I do not believe that the council through the bid appeal rejection process has the authority to direct the department to either rebid it or has the authority to direct the department to award it to anybody. You don't.
I would agree with you.
All we're doing is saying that we, that, that Public Works could still pick somebody else.
Correct, and, and the difficulty in that situation, if the appeal were re-granted and this bid were to be sent back to the director, director or the Public Works Department, is that then we would then have a bidder who would not be certified under the small and emerging small business ordinance for this work. And so we would have to evaluate the situation further to determine whether or not all bids should be rejected and the project can be rebid, or whether or not there is some other basis. But as it stands, regardless of whether the confusion of multiple lists are on the website, regardless of whether the form should be updated to provide clarity, we would then be faced with a situation where we would have a prospective low bidder that is in violation of our municipal code ordinances on small and emerging small businesses and the bid specifications. And so that would present another question that we would have to then evaluate and answer.
Mr. Harding?
Well, how can, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time getting past the point that if, on the City of Omaha's website, uh, on the, the masthead of City of Omaha Human Rights and Relations, it shows that they are an approved, I don't care if, I mean, that, that they're an approved SEB.
Ryan Weesing, Assistant City Attorney, I don't believe that it necessarily shows that, I think it shows...
What's, what's the reason for that being up there?
Well, it says product and services classifications. And I don't have the entire website in front of me, I was trying to bring it up on my phone. I think from what my understanding is, and maybe Mr. Espinoza can, um, provide very clarity or you can perhaps bring it up on, on your tablets, is there are two lists on the Human Rights and Relations website. There's one list of certified small and emerging small business providers under the next codes. And then there's this separate product and service classifications list. I'm not familiar with this product and service classifications list, so I don't know that I can provide you much information on it. I don't know where it comes from, I don't know why it's there. But I think that it's two separate lists. And just because there is this list on the Human Rights and Relations website doesn't necessarily mean that this list is therefore a certification by the City of Omaha or the Human Rights and Relations Department that the, um, codes or entities listed. And I believe they're just codes, I don't believe, as I look through this list, that it actually lists, um, subcontractors, it just lists different classifications. So, Kestner Construction, I believe, is, is the entity, is not listed on this list. It lists, um, mailing services, uh, monitoring services home. Different types of, uh, services that are defined as product and service classifications by the City of Omaha. What it doesn't say there is certified small and emerging small business companies or next codes.
Okay.
And I believe Mr. Stube's attempting to get my attention and may have more information.
All right, I'll ask Mr. Stube something, then I'm gonna ask Todd to come up. Uh, Mr. Stube?
Yeah, so if, if I could just maybe give my opinion with regard to the two different lists, and it kinda goes to the question that Councilmember Palermo asked with regard to what's qualified versus what's certified. In my opinion, the, if, if there is a project, and I'll use the library as an example of project, which is demolition project, there are multiple contractors out there that are probably qualified to do demolition work. Pete's Meyer being one, Cox being another one, Anderson Excavating, and, and maybe Kestner being another one that are qualified to do the work. And so, if Public Works would say, "I have a project to do demolition of a library, I send that to the purchasing department, and the purchasing department goes through there and say, 'Okay, these are the companies, Cox, Pete's Meyer, Anderson Excavating, that are all qualified, they've identified themselves as being qualified to do that type of work. I'm sending out a notification to all those contractors to do the work because they've identified themselves as being fifty-nine or sixty-five, whatever it might be. But, they're not all certified to perform work under the SEB program. That requires another level of effort that utilizes HR and R. And so that to me is the difference between qualified and that list versus certified and the SEB list, which specifically identifies contractor capable of doing certain work under the NACE codes."
Thank you. Todd, it looked like you maybe wanted to weigh in on something.
Uh, Mr. Stube, I don't disagree with what, Todd Beatty Erickson Construction. Mr. Stube, after all the research I've done since this has happened, I don't disagree with exactly what you just said. If you go to the city SEB website and you do a search for Kestner Construction, it brings up a sheet that prints off on eleven by seventeen sideways in both of these codes and all of the, the qualifications that Kestner has to do both NAICS and this list are both on that spreadsheet. I, I don't disagree with you saying, "If they wanna do demo work, they need to have the right NAICS code." I disagree with the form, I disagree with the information we were provided at bid time. Because we went to the SEB form, we brought up Kestner. We go across to two different columns, one says industrial construction, the other says public works. We didn't follow, we didn't dig into the NAICS code for industrial construction to see that it excluded public or wastewater. Have we learned a lesson in this? Yes. But do we think, think we should still be awarded this bid? Yes.
Yeah, I wanna see what Todd's got here.
See if I can get this to focus, I don't know if it will or not.
Just let it sit for a second.
This is Jenny Erickson, again, if you Google SEB Omaha, this, it takes you straight to the Omaha site, um, the SEB. And then you click on download the PDF and this is what you get. And so right there, you were just on Kestner, is where it shows code fifty-nine, all of those for the city classification.
It'd be good, point to where, where that is, please, Jenny.
Right, there, right there's Kestner Construction. You see it's got two-three-six-two-one-oh for the NAICS right there, and then next to that, it's got all those other City of Omaha codes. Code fifty-nine is construction, public works contractor.
And the, remind me, or, the two-three-six-two-one-oh is the one that specifically excludes the sewer work?
Yes, but then the one on the other side of it includes demolition and everything else that's involved in this bid.
But do any of those, one-seventy-three, five-thirty-eight, fifty-nine, fifty-six, sixteen, zero, and five-eighty-six, do any of those say to the contrary that it, it excludes work in sewer?
No.
But it doesn't say that it, if you will, preempts twenty-three sixty-two-ten for that specific?
And we went off of fifty-nine, which is public works contractor on that one. And those are the codes, so those codes right there in that list that we had the printout of, that's on the SEB website.
Okay, so let me, let me play the other side then. So even if it says that it's, it's, I'm sorry, say, say exactly how you understand fifty-nine again.
Fifty-nine is, um, on the, when we go to the SEB site and look at the codes, that is public works contractor.
Okay. Could you not be a public works contractor, but also still have, you can't do sewer work?
I don't know that answer, I mean...
Well, I mean, if...
I've, I've never seen something exclude sewer work, so that one...
Well, except that the...
Except for that, that code does.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the fifty-nine does not.
It, is that even if you're an appro, if you're approved for city public works work, you might not have the ability to qualify for the subset, if you will, of that's, that, that which is related to sewer work because your, the NA, NAISC code says otherwise.
I guess I would go back and say, "He's not doing sewer specific work. He's tearing out the floor of a industrial building and doing the demolition on a concrete floor. So he's not doing specific sewer work." I mean, if we got real technical to the work being performed, he's doing demolition in an industrial building.
Saw cutting concrete and breaking out concrete and hauling it off.
He's not performing sewer specific work.
I'm sorry, bring, twenty, twenty-six, what is it here?
Oh, sorry, you have to see my children, apparently.
So twenty, so Heather Tippi Pierce, could you please, again, bring up that example, the exhibit that showed the definition from twenty-three sixty-two-ten? Is she gone? Wow, does anyone have that?
I don't have it in my...
Because I, because to your point that you just brought up, that, um, I, I wanna know what that language is because it's not, the way you kind of explained it, I think you could make a case that it's not sewer work.
Correct, he's not doing any of this sewer specific work. There is a thing, sewer work on this job.
Bob Stube, Public Works, so I think the, it's not necessarily sewer work. I think it reverted back to the fact that it's working at a wastewater facility, I think is where the...
Well, that's why I'd like to be clear on what the language says.
This one, this project itself is just concrete and equipment replacement, there's no sewer work on it.
So Jenny, I wanted to know what that language says.
We don't.
Because I think it, it could be important.
I think it excluded work.
Sewer work.
Yeah, I don't know the language.
It might be important. Okay, well...
We would've walked away if we thought we made a mistake.
No, I, I get it.
Sorry to keep you here late for this one.
All right, that's it for now, I might buzz back in.
Mr. Palermo?
I had a question for, uh, Ryan. Not really, but you came, you're...
Ryan Weesing, Assistant City Attorney.
Yeah.
Um, I was able to just Google, um, and... under next.com, you can see that down there, and put in code twenty-three six-two-one-zero, industrial building construction. I believe the language under the illustrative examples that the council was looking for was waste disposal plant, except sewage treatment construction. So if I understand, uh, the information from Public Works is that this project was going to occur in a sewage treatment plant. Uh, under this next code, the construction at sewage treatment was excluded from this approved list of illustrative examples, and that's why they don't qualify under this, uh, next code. It's not sewer work, it's work at a sewage treatment plant.
So, um, Mr. Weesing, thank you for that. No, that's exactly what I wanted to see and I knew we had it. So, along the lines of a question previously, which, um, again, I, I know I'm confused, but I'm putting it together, with the, the lines of what we've saw with not doing work in a sewage treatment plant, I, I, I have that as the contractor is not doing sewage treatment work. They're there for what their SEB title has them doing. Because if we, if we said that, then that means if you qualify as an electrician through the City of Omaha, whether, um, through NAICS or for the codes you would pick out of the book, but that electrician work was done in a sewer treatment plant, you're not qualified as a sewer treatment person. But you're there as an electrician, and that's the same way I read that. So, to me, um, we, we probably need to go back to the drawing board on this. And I, I hate to always use as an example for the Erickson Construction there, but sometimes you gotta have seven lawyers with you to get things done, and you don't have them. So, it, it makes things difficult. So it, it makes things difficult. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Harding?
Ryan, why don't you have that, that, uh, bring it up? But they, what they are certified for, please? What Kessler is certified for? I don't remember what that number is. But I, I know Christian just gave it to you.
Ryan Weason, Assistant City Attorney. I believe it is that number that they were certified under, that twenty-three, sixty-two, ten.
Okay. Bring, show that one more time, please. And maybe, um, Ryan, I'm not sure if you're the one to answer this question, but specific, well, actually, I'll ask Jenny. What, Jenny, what specifically is the work that Kessler would have, Kessler would have been doing?
Jenny Erickson again. They are going to be inside the plant doing demolition, so concrete removal.
Is demolition the same as construction?
In my opinion, yes. Anytime you do construction, you either start from scratch or you go in, tear out, and put back new. So yes.
I'm not sure that was the answer I wanted. I wanted you to say, "No." Yeah.
Well, it's construction.
I didn't do very well.
It's, I mean, they're doing construction.
My point was going to be that I think construction and demolition are, I mean, in, in what they are certified for, I, I think it's two diff, yeah, I think it's two different things. So I,
I mean, they're not doing sewage construction.
I'll, I know there's been, I've heard other whispers, but I'm not so sure. I'm, I'm opposed to sending this back to Public Works. You want me to do that?
I was going to say-
I'll do it. You know what? I'll do it. I'm going to make a motion to, um, approve the appeal.
I'll second granting the appeal.
And send it back to Public Works.
There's that motion in a second.
It doesn't, doesn't get you the contract. We're just sending it back.
We get that.
Go for the lights. Looks like we're down a member. I don't know if she's in the building.
Looks like Johnson's absent. Melton.
Yeah.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is passed six to zero. Non-action items, items forty-nine through seventy-four do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Johnson is absent. Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is passed six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at five fifty-two.